Okay, thank you everybody. Linda, are there any communications other than what's on the agenda this evening? No, everything should be there. Nope. Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the public workshop and executive session from November 13th, 2017, and also the regular public and executive session from November 20th, 2017. Did anybody have any questions or concerns with those minutes?
I did. Actually, there was a...
Make sure you use your microphone.
Yeah. I believe that on the curriculum report where we were approving the HIBs for September, I believe that I had voted to abstain. This was number two in...
No, no, which, what date?
For the September HIB report.
No, but, oh, sorry, the November 20th.
November 20th meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I believe that I had abstained.
You had. I'll look into that.
For all, not just for...
Not just for the one, but for all of them.
For all of them.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay. So, we will move on to the student representative report. Hello, ladies?
Hello. Okay, so, we begin with Irving. The PTO treated the students to a performance of Biscuit. Irving had a theater company come and they performed a few stories from the books, which I'm sure was delightful. I remember the biscuit stories, I was a big fan. On Friday, December 22nd, they will be having their winter sing-along and parties to celebrate the holidays before winter break. And then at Bartle, the epic family movie night was spearheaded by the third grade team and was a great success with many students and parents in attendance. The teachers did an amazing job decorating the hall and entrance so as to enhance the secret life of pets theme and the movie theater effect overall. Parents absolutely loved the experience. They had a dictionary assembly, which went very well. Students loved playing the Voggle game that was included in the, I'm sorry, included in the assembly. The Bartle cultural competency teams made amazing presentations educating us all on their chapter in Race Talk: The Conspiracy of Silence by Darrell Wing Sue. The Bartle PTO did an amazing job with the Thanksgiving food drive. They provided families with food baskets and a bank card with monies to support them through Thanksgiving. The Bartle epic family math night will be held this Thursday, December 13th, in the Bartle Cafeteria B. And Bartle Student Council will be holding a wrap-it-up event in which families can bring gifts to Bartle and have the gifts wrapped for free.
We do not have a report from the middle school tonight, but at the high school, 257 students are on the honor roll for quarter one. That is 54 percent of our school, so over half. Service Day was a great success, so the day before Thanksgiving. Overall, the school made hundreds of cards, reusable bags, real T-shirts from the environmental club, and care packages for the homeless. Students were also captivated by the keynote speaker Eric Legrand, and a special thank you goes out to Dr. Taylor and the board for giving us that opportunity to hear him speak. It was truly amazing. The PTSO met last Tuesday, where they discussed the new schedule and reviewed feedback from students, parents, and faculty. The Model UN Club had an excellent conference at Rutgers Model UN from November 30th to December 3rd. Several members won individual awards, and the advisors were especially pleased that Highland Park delegates emphasized collaboration and consensus in committee. And just on a personal note, we're both officers in the club and everyone did amazing this year at Rumun. We were both very impressed.
I heard the same at home.
The website, we actually have a complaint...
Or concern.
Or concern this week. The website does not have the period schedule on there. Like, the actual bell schedule is posted on the HS, on the main HS, High School page. So, if we could just repost the period schedule again on the website, just to make, for clarification. And finally, agenda holders are being placed in the girls' bathroom. They are ordered and should be up soon.
And I just want to add about the Eric Legrand thing, that I, Liv and I were in the front of the auditorium because we were, like, speaking, and I have never seen the high school pay attention. So, quiet, so, like, still in their seats, so few people trying to leave, like, teachers, students. I think we all got a lot out of it, and I thought it was really effective in terms of, like, I just, assemblies are often, don't work very well, and this one did, and I think it speaks a lot to him and his capacity to, kind of, connect with the students.
Well, thank you for that, because I was going to ask for more info about that, because I really wanted to come and then couldn't make it at the last minute, and I was kind of bummed out about that. All right. Thank you both so much. Does anybody have any questions for either our students? No?
I did, actually. I wanted to hear more about Model UN at Rutgers and how that went. I heard a couple of different anecdotes, but I'm sure that there's more to hear.
So, we take 60 students to the Model UN Conference in New Brunswick, which is, makes us qualify as a large school, so we compete with East Brunswick, for example.
And Franklin.
And Franklin. So, we compete with these really, really large schools, and that's often a challenge for us, because we're only pulling from a student body of 500 kids. But I would say that every single student who came did a really excellent job. I mean, Liv and I were very involved leading up to the conference in terms of preparation, and we thought that people did really excellent research, had a really strong understanding. And I know that in committee, people were pushing for collaboration and consensus, and those are the things that, at Highland Park, we think are the most important part of Model UN. So, we were really glad that Highland Park students, you know, were known in their committee for pushing for consensus and resolutions and working together and being really inclusive.
And, you know, just, there was so much growth as well. There were so many delegates going in terrified on Thursday night, and it was just so awesome to watch them come back, report back to us. We had, like, these, like, team meetings at the end of every, at the end of every day, and they would just come and report back about how great they're doing and how much they love it. So, just to see, like, that personal growth and to see every younger delegate get so excited about the next conference and about the next day, just in general, was really, really amazing to watch, especially as seniors, because we've both been doing this since freshman year, so.
What I heard, just really briefly, was that there was a lot of competitive energy coming from most other schools, and that my student who was involved was very proud of what you're saying, the consensus and collaboration spirit that Highland Park had. It was really about problem solving. That's what I heard, so it's good to hear that from you guys.
I think that's right, and I also just want to say that people are really excited about Mexico in February and that we're going back, and I think that we're going to take that mindset to Mexico and hopefully forge even stronger partnerships with our Mexican students in the sister schools there. And so, I think that was, we're really confident now, seeing what happened at Rumun, that we'll have a really strong team as our, kind of, global ambassadors.
And it was, it was really impressive to me how, like, what you were saying, there are so many competitive delegates, and just seeing how, like, I got to go around and see the committees in one morning, and it was just so enlightening to see, like, so many delegates in, like, these big circles of people yelling over each other, like, our delegates just, like, telling them to stop and to let other people talk, and, like, just those, like, little gestures mean so much, and they really make the resolution so much better. So, it was really great.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both so much. So, we will move on to Dr. Taylor's report.
Just to give you a sense of the scope of the event, there were approximately 1,100 students there from around the country. We were 60-strong, something like that, right? About 60.
59 or something, yeah.
So, it was huge. Took up two floors of the Hyatt. I want to hand out some bracelets courtesy of DECA.
Thank you.
I'll explain why, and then I'll launch into my formal presentation. So, a lot of you know that DECA is a service-oriented organization, and one of the big things they do each year, which a lot of kids have fun doing, is the Make-A-Wish Walk. It's usually around Halloween time, on the track, it's cold, a lot of students go out, they have to pay, Olivia, how much do you have to pay to do the Make-A-Wish Walk? Do you know? Like, $10?
$10?
Probably like $10. And they raise money, and they give it to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So, this year, that walk alone raised $2,725. We are, Highland Park is very much on the Make-A-Wish map. They, they've honored the group on numerous occasions. Ms. Canavera can't make it tonight, so we'll postpone her update about CPAC's work as soon as possible, probably sometime in January. But what I would like to do is spend 10 minutes updating the board and the community on the state of discipline, how we are approaching discipline now that we have been implementing three action steps that are associated with one of our goals related to pathway. The last slide I'm going to show you has an audio file, it's about five minutes that I'll play for everyone. It's something that I sent the middle and high school teachers just this past Friday that I think gives an overview, a vision for the rest of the year into next year when it comes to working with students who violate our discipline code. So, the whole child goal, which is the first goal and that first focus area of our strategic plan, includes these three action steps. So, eventually, we're going to be revising board policy on discipline. As you'll hear in my audio file, the intent is to have that policy in place for the 2018-19 school year. But besides policy, we also want to change the onsite protocol, the way we actually work with students, because generally, board policies are very broad. So, our handbooks going into the summer will be revised to align to the policy and the practices that we are working to put in place. Now, I gotta make this disclaimer. I'm going to show you a couple of slides about everything we're doing, but just keep in mind that, and I think this is pretty common sense for most of us, there's no magic way to change an approach to discipline that will be more effective in helping students work through their misbehaviors. I mean, there's, there's no policy or no protocol by itself that's going to actually change things overnight. It takes a whole school effort, a whole child effort, and has to be systemic, which is why what I'm going to show you now are all the things we're doing from the ground up, from Irving on up, to change the way we think about students' needs, students' social, emotional, and psychological needs. At Irving, we are a fully responsive classroom school, so much so, we're a model, we're a magnet. We actually attract people from outside of our district to see our practices. Walking to Irving, everybody is referred to as a friend. Just today, I actually called the teacher because I wanted to make an appointment. I asked if she had students in the class, and she got back to me and said, "No, I don't have any friends here right now, so we can, we can talk." It's ingrained in the way everybody talks and the way they relate to people, the way they do things. When it comes to setting up a discipline code of some kind, it's all done collaboratively, even at that age, pre-K to grades-one age. Rules, classroom behavior, standards are all developed collaboratively. Now, at Bartle, we are also a responsive classroom school, not quite the same level, the same comprehensive level we are at Irving. But the exciting development that I'm proud to say is going to be official in the middle of January, is the reopening of the Bartle School Social-Emotional Decision Making Lab, something that Rutgers and Ms. Potabekki, who I think our student reps probably had when you were at Bartle, put together, and we think was highly effective in helping students identify feelings, recognize what things may trigger anger, how to listen to peers and adults more effectively, how to communicate to other people that they had disagreements or that they're upset about something, how to understand other people's perspective, to get out of their own selves for a little while and understand that there are other ways that people might be thinking about them and their personalities. And finally, to help them do a better job making decisions when they get upset or they may have a conflict with somebody else. Now, the lab is going to be housed in Room 105 at Bartle, a full classroom that we have available just for this purpose. It'll be staffed by Rutgers University interns, undergraduate and graduate level from the Applied Psychology Department. They'll be supervised by a coordinator, who I have been emailing back and forth. Ms. Potabekki, by the way, has been working with Ms. Tracy Maiden, a second-grade teacher, to implement the lab. It was initially a project that Ms. Maiden did for a program, a certification program that evolved into something bigger. Ms. Potabekki has been giving her guidance, and we're ready to launch in the middle of January. There is a resolution on tonight's board agenda for discussion, which I hope the board will vote on affirmatively next week, that has us locking in the interns. And then at the middle and high schools, as you know, thanks to the presentation that Ms. Rexer made, we are moving into a more restorative model of building relationships with students and adults, strengthening connections to the schools and with each other. Ms. Rexer will be leaving us, her resignation is on the agenda, she's taking a position in another school district to do some more of the work that she started doing here. But we have, we being the leadership team and I, have already reached out to the individual whose name is Tanya Lewis, who trained ours' teacher leaders, and who actually spoke with the board, I think, this past July. She has agreed to come on board, pending board approval when I present a resolution likely in January for her work, her services, to come, not every day, but two to three times a week, to fill in for what Ms. Rexer did, which was basically to facilitate social justice circles, reactive conferences, model effective circle of conferences, community-building conferences with teachers, and other things related to how helping us grow our restorative practice approach. Tanya Lewis will fill in for her and do that. You should know that in almost every instance where we have to hold a student accountable for having broken our discipline code or policy, we do follow up in almost all cases with some kind of restorative practice conference, usually a reactive conference, voluntary. We don't require students to take part in those conferences, but if they're willing, we facilitate that conference. And I'm not going to get into what that is, because Ms. Rexer already explained that to you. So, now I'd like to play this five-minute audio file. I shared this file with the faculty because there was a question about the vision we have, the long-range vision and the short-term vision for discipline. And I admit, I have not done a good enough job communicating that vision, so I was hoping this was my first step, this audio file, in doing that. But the bottom line is, as you'll hear in the next five minutes, we are shifting away from a purely punitive model. It's not going to happen overnight, might take a year or two, to more towards a restorative practice approach, supporting students, finding ways to not just punish them, but if we are going to hold them accountable, do it in more constructive, effective ways, while at the same time providing them the social, emotional support they need. I have already directed the principals in all of the schools and the assistant principal, Ms. Brady, at the middle high school, to scale back use of out-of-school suspension as an automatic response to some of those things that in the past we would have, because we've resolved, and the research says, that out-of-school suspensions doesn't necessarily work. And that research, by the way, was shared with the board by Dr. Ann Gregory and a resident who did some work for us a couple of years ago, who actually came out and really turned me on to restorative practices. So, listen to the next five minutes, and then I'll take questions if you have any.
Hello, this is Dr. Taylor. I have to do a better job sharing my vision for our approach to discipline with all of you, and I'm hoping in the next few minutes, I will have been able to at least bring you on board to what I see as our short, maybe a long-range plan. Now, mind you, this is just my vision. I've worked collaboratively with those people, from teachers, governors, leadership team, and residents, and board members, to make sure that this vision is something we can all believe in. Students right now are being held accountable for their actions. It might not seem that way because of some technical problems we're having communicating what we do to follow up when kids are disrespectful to us, get in fights with each other, or do other things that might reach the discipline code. Now, I had to break in the leadership team to drastically scale back out-of-school suspension as a response to behaviors that in the past we would have used if students did certain things. Other than that, all other disciplinary measures are in place, including the guest suspension and detention, as also other accountability measures we used in the past. So, the primary difference right now, in the short term, in the way we are looking at students and this behavior, is that we might not throw them out of school for things that in the past we wouldn't have. We still deserve the right to send students out of school for a very negative behavior here, but we're looking for ways to restore these kids to the community, strengthen their connections to adults, their peers, and the school through restorative practices. So, there is one more piece to the vision here, and that is looking at best practices that are out there, guide ways to enable kids to count, allow them to work with discipline model, and we also recognize we have to hold kids accountable. So, we've been looking at Syracuse Code of Accountability, it's come to us from Dr. Ann Gregory and other experts in the field, to be a real great model that integrates restorative practices and accountability. There have been many cases since when I've get called a brave, get a pro-7A of Red Glass or seeking input about how to respond to certain discipline issues. You know, we're growing through this ourselves, on the need to hold kids accountable, moving ways to do the discipline model. There'll be times when I'll get that call, we'll pull up Syracuse Code of Accountability, and we'll, we'll come together to enact some kind of accountability measures. Now, restorative practices almost always follow the accountability you put in place to address student behavior, but we're working on this collaboratively. We need to do a better job communicating to youth, follow them, and we'll work on that. But just know that our vision has us moving away from a good discipline model, or towards a combination of learned practices and accountability measure model. We're looking at Syracuse Code of Accountability as one of our go-to best practices to look at, and we're going to work together collaboratively with the faculty, with members of the community, about state culture, something to do with discipline, to come up with a fair, viable, effective discipline code and formal board policy that we all will have in 2018, 2019. So, here's the timeline. The discipline study group, which I've put together, made up of middle and high school students, teachers, parents, and members of the leadership team, is currently looking at the discipline code policy, and will make a proposal to the middle and high school faculty sometime in March for your review. Then, I will ask for your input. I will take that input, combine it with the proposal that this is the study we made, and we'll then make a proposal to the board policy committee. So, by the summer, we hope to have a new policy or practice in place. Look, we're doing this work because when we look back at the history of discipline in our schools, you see a couple of things. One, there's a real net weight among different subgroups of our students when it comes to disciplining them. Kids of color, our Hispanic students, our American students, bad students, our special needs students, tend to be disciplined punitively more frequently than their peers. And we're doing it because we're learning new things in our field, and we're recognizing that there are more effective ways to help kids grow through their major challenges. Thank you for taking the time to listen and watch this vision, and as always, my floor, phone, email, adult to you, and questions for the survey.
By the way, we have five students who are on that discipline study group, so that's all I have to share regarding discipline. Any questions from the board or comments, concerns?
Are those five students a mixture of middle school, high school students, or are they strictly high school students?
The on this discipline study group?
Yes.
Two students from the middle school, three students from the high school.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, they are students who have been impacted by our discipline policy, not...
That was my next question.
You know, we didn't, we were careful about which students we wanted to have a say in this process.
Can you repeat the timeline?
So, by March, I hope to have the discipline study group come up with a proposal for the board policy committee. Then, through, maybe April, I'm sorry, no, first to the faculty. I'd like to get faculty input before I then go to the board policy committee, so I'll move from the discipline study group in March, maybe February, depending on how swift we are with our work, presented to the teachers, March, April, then to the board policy committee. So, I hope through the summer, we can have our first reading and second reading, ready to go in September with a new policy. If that means we have to alter our, or add addendum to our middle and high school student handbook, so be it, we'll do that. Any concerns about the timeline or thoughts about that?
No.
Okay.
And interestingly, Dr. Taylor and I both got outreach from a student who graduated last year, who's a freshman in college this year and is writing a paper for school on discipline equity issues in Highland Park. So, had all kinds of questions for us as to, you know, what we've seen, what we're doing, what we're hoping, you know, is the result of the changes that we're making. So, I very much look forward to her. She promised she'd send along her report after she was done, and then hopefully I'll take it a step further and ask if she'll be willing to share it with the board and maybe even come and talk to us and let us know what she finds.
One last word I want to say. I did mention that I'm putting together what I call the Community Leadership Summit, but I'll hopefully meet before the, sometime between now and before the second week of January. Bruce Morgan, president of the local chapter of NAACP, Ashton Morell, our president, Darcy, Ms. Lassiter, Ms. Osmeier, Ms. Brady, myself, Mayor Mittler, and Councilwoman Elsie Foster-Dublin will be meeting to talk, oh, I'm sorry, and also Seth Capertale, Rabbi, our local minister, Seth Capertale. We're going to be meeting to talk about what kind of wraparound services we can provide for these students, because there are some students who have exhausted our resources, the teen center, guidance counselors, restorative practices. So, I want to start pulling on our community resources to see how we could, we could do even more. So, thank you. That's the end of my report.
Okay. I want to just take a look at board members around the table. Would anyone object if we moved public comment to before our reports?
That's agreeable.
Is that okay? All right. So, for everybody who's here and wanted to give public comment, instead of leaving our public comment session to after our committee reports, I'm going to move it to before our committee reports, so you guys aren't sitting here listening to us blab on for the next hour and change, because that's not what you came here to do, is my suspicion. So, Linda, can we change item 12 on the agenda and move it up to be, what would that make it?
11.
To 11. And, do we need a motion to do that? So, moved?
I guess.
Right as well. Can I get a motion?
Move away.
Can I get a motion to move Agenda Item Number 12 up to Agenda Item Number 11?
So, moved.
Second.
There we go. We got that.
And at the same time, we have to take 11 and make it 12.
Yes.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, let me just read my little blurb. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and is reserved this time for your comments. So, if anybody would like to make public comment, you can come up to the podium. If you're a student, you can just say, "Hi, I'm a student." And if you're a community member, just state your name for the record and your address for the board secretary, so she can record it in the minutes.
Hi, my name is Andy Land, and the people with me are people who are on the 2017 season football team. We're also joined with Aya here, who, she joined us. So, we're here regarding the situation that's going on with Coach McGlynn, and I believe that I'm, so I'm basically speaking on behalf of the team and people who do support McGlynn. We are also going to present a petition that was signed by community members as well as students in the high school, and some in the middle school, possibly. So, before I start, I want to thank the Board of Education for letting us speak, you know, at this meeting and letting us represent those that support Coach. My name is Andy Land, as I said, and I am one of the students who played and obviously I support Coach. We all played, you know, under Coach, and although some played longer than others, we all have a marvelous understanding of him as a human being. Together, along with members of the community, we present a petition, which you guys, I believe, can make a copy of. And we support him and basically we question the allegations that were made against him. The allegations do not echo the man he is and what he stands for. Under my two seasons with Coach McGlynn for football, I was regularly taught that we are... are a family. You know, one thing that most people might not, you know, know about Coach is he occasionally brings his two daughters to practice in the summer, and he would tell them that, you know, we were just their brothers, and if they needed anything, that we were there, or, you know, like, we were just close. And he would bring a family setting to a game of football. That is, you know, not necessarily the family, you know, kind of setting here that, you know, typically people associate it with. You know, anyone who knows Coach knows that he's a passionate man, and he's mostly passionate about his family and the students that he teaches and coaches. He, you know, he's shaped my life in so many ways. You know, one example is he's the reason why I got into sports. You know, he got me into football and baseball, and I've had it for two football seasons now and one baseball season, and I've never witnessed him harm anyone mentally or physically. And some of you may know this, but this is one of the hardest seasons in Highland Park history. We played with a roster of, you know, around 18 students, and we finished the season without a win, but, you know, without Coach McGlynn, we would have never finished the season. You know, he fought to keep the program alive. He insisted that we keep the program and we don't end it this year. And he's one of the biggest mentors, you know, in my life. He's given me treasured advice, and just being a phone call away or being in the middle school, I can always come to him if I need him. And I think I speak for everyone when I say this, but he never refuses to help anyone, no matter who you are, where you come from, even if you don't play a sport for him, he'll listen to you and he'll take time out of his day or, you know, night, and he'll be there for you. You know, one thing that Coach says that I really admire is, you never know what's going on in another student's household. You can't judge them, and you have to support them no matter what. That's stuck with me throughout this season, and it's something I'm going to remember for the rest of my life. He is, you know, not only a professional, but a very compassionate man. His attitude in life is to be proud of who you are and where you come from. And, you know, the countless lessons that he has taught, you know, the current and former members of the football team has made an enormous impact on our lives. And during our annual Thanksgiving game, obviously McGlynn was not allowed to coach that game, but, you know, I can say, I think, we all were very disappointed in not having him there, because he's the reason why we got to the point in the season where we got to play our rivals. And, you know, we, I think we all believe that, you know, you finish what you start, and we all stand with our coach at the end of the day. So I do have that petition.
Okay, wonderful. We will take that, and if you don't mind hanging out for just a little bit, we'll make a copy of that and give it back to you. And thank you guys all so much for coming out. As we said at the last meeting, obviously, we can't discuss personnel issues, but we do absolutely appreciate you coming out and for letting us know what you're thinking.
Thank you.
Did anyone else want to make public comment this evening?
My name is Grace Castelus Laneres. My son is Evan. I am speaking on behalf of myself and Evan, who is in Florida, attending university. Coach McGlynn was wonderful to Evan, a mentor, and I was always able to count on the coach to make sure that Evan finishes homework every day or every week. He always makes sure that Evan finishes report before practice or before any game. He was wonderful to my son, he was wonderful to me. I still have his cellphone, on my cellphone, and he's always said, anytime you need anything, just call me or let me know. And he always asks about Evan and how he's doing at the, in Florida. So I'm here to support him, and I agree with everything you guys said today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Grace. I'm sorry, can I just have you, there should be a sheet there, if you could just write your name and your address, so she can record your public comments in the board minutes? Thank you very much. Hi there.
My name is Gina Young. I'm a guardian of Narcia Boykins. And I met Coach McGlynn when he started coaching Narcia, him and Coach P. And McGlynn always helped me with Narcia. I have custody of him, his sister, and his brother, so it's a handful. And he, he just was amazing. He said that he'd give his life for, to see every last one of these kids succeed. And he never gave up on Narcia, and I almost gave up on him because he was just doing too much for me. I'm like, he's like, really doing too much. And McGlynn was like, just hang in there, be patient. I'd give my life for all these kids. He always said that. So I was around him maybe the last five years that I had Narcia. And when I heard the allegations, I was like, wow, I have to tell somebody how this man was so amazing in our lives. And he didn't have to, because he didn't know me, and he, I saw him do that with a lot of kids. I saw him go out of his way, I saw him talk to them, I saw him give, and I just saw so much from this guy. And I just want to say, like, I thank him, because my grandson could be on Route 130, because he sure wasn't listening. And this program that Dr. Taylor is talking about, I would have loved to have put him in there. But I had Coach McGlynn, and he did it. Narcia is at William Patterson College, and you could not have told me that a couple of years ago. He told me, don't give up on him. And I just want to say.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say.
Thank you. And could I just ask you also to sign in there with your name and address for the board secretary?
Hello, my name is Keisha Harrison. My son, Justin Sims, graduated from Highland Park High School last year and played for Coach McGlynn for four years. I've known Coach McGlynn for a very, very long time, and the allegations against him have troubled us and have caused a lot of sleepless nights in our house, because the things that we're hearing totally contradict what we've experienced with him through the years. To echo the sentiments of Andy and of Gina, this man has served as a surrogate father to so many of these kids, and it's not just his football players, but it's the students that come through this school. He's someone who stresses accountability and respect, and it's not just about winning in sports, but it's about winning in life. And unfortunately, a lot of these kids do come from single parent homes, and they don't have the proper support. And Coach McGlynn is someone who just tries to find the good in everyone, and tries to tap into everyone's talent, and doesn't judge, like Andy said, he doesn't judge the home lives or the backgrounds of these kids, it's just making them be the best people they can possibly be. And so with that being said, I just, you know, I felt like I needed to be here tonight to voice my support to him. I did send a note to Dr. Taylor, but I appreciate each one of you giving us the opportunity to come and speak tonight on Mr. McGlynn's behalf during this investigation. So thank you.
Oh, thank you so much for coming.
I would like to sign a petition that these guys have. I wasn't aware of that. If I could sign it, I would like to.
Sure.
Okay. My son, Ryan, just graduated last year, 2017. Members of my family have been in this town for probably 80 years going through this high school. I graduated from Highland Park High School. Brian was coached by Rich McGlynn for four years in football. He played quarterback. He probably got spoken to and/or yelled at more than anyone on that team over the last four years. Never once did I ever think that my son was being abused, okay? So much so that, and I don't think he felt he was being abused either, because the kid went on to do very, very well. In baseball, he was coached by Rich McGlynn his final year. He did very well. Again, I don't think he ever felt like he was being abused. So this just really troubles me, and I can't even believe we're sitting here having this conversation now, this meeting now, and then the one that we witnessed back in November. I think the whole thing is just crazy. He is a good man, a good teacher, a good coach. He has been so much more to these kids than some of them can ever hope to have in their lives. He's been a great influence. And to sit here and imagine that a group of people are getting away with what they're getting away with right now, just because they feel like saying a few things.
Can I just, I just want to slow you down a little bit on puning
I'm sorry.
Other people's public comment.
No, it's nothing specific.
Yeah. I just wanted to slow it down. We would love to hear what you have to say on Mr. McGlynn.
We have a really good man's reputation being slandered right now, so sometimes I get a little bit emotional about it, so.
Understood.
Anyway, the fact is, these guys came up with what I thought, I don't know, it was a collaborative effort. Andy wrote it, I'm sure you all chipped in, it was awesome. They hit on a lot of real good points. This is something that we all need to come together and really, really take these words into consideration, that these people, and, you know, maybe there's a lot of people that wanted to be here tonight and they couldn't, because they work too far away.
Sure.
Like, my son right now is studying for a final, and I, trust me, I had not a real nice conversation with him tonight, because I told him, you should be here. But it's 40% of his grade, and he's not here. But I know that he wrote a letter on Coach McGlynn's behalf, and there's a lot of people that stand behind him, and I just hope something very, very good comes out of all of this. I could probably go on, but it's the same thing over and over.
No, thank you very much for coming out.
He's a good man, he shouldn't be in this position right now, and I hope everybody does the right thing. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for signing in.
Hi, my name is Aya Underwood, and I'm a student here. I know we've heard a lot of opinions about football players and the boys, but I'm here representing the girls' basketball team, because he was my coach for two years. And in those two years, McGlynn has been nothing but a role model for all of us. He has motivated me and most of the girls who couldn't be here tonight. They, like, motivated us to be the best that we can. We always speak about our freshmen, sophomore years being our best two years of basketball, because he, because we felt like we were on top of the world. He motivated us to do our best, and he saw the potential in us. And even outside of basketball, during the summer, I would come, I would watch his kids sometimes when he was practicing, and it was just always about family. He would always say, even outside of sports, he would always ask us, oh, how are we, like, how's school going? He would try to help us as much as he could. And the allegations that are made against him are, like, totally out of context of what, how we, how I view McGlynn. So I just wanted that to come, for you guys to hear my opinion on the girls' behalf and of our team.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Jonah Beaverun, and I've known Coach McGlynn for over 10 years. I started out with the rec camp, and he was my gym teacher in middle school, and then finally my baseball coach last year. And every time I see McGlynn, he greets me. He's a very personable guy, and he treats me every time like I'm his own son, whether it's some critique or boosting me up after I've had a rough day. And specifically in baseball, I learned a lot from him. I mean, I was exposed to him for a few months, and if there's one thing I can take out of that season, it's that you should demand perfection from yourself and everyone around you. And I know he demanded perfection, or strove for perfection with his players, but also himself more than anyone else. If he made a mistake, he would confess and he'd say it. And like everyone else has been saying, McGlynn was like a father figure to a lot of his players, whether it's getting someone food when, you know, they might have not had a meal, to, like I said earlier, talking to someone when they've had a bad day, just to try to cheer them up, the little things. He would do that for every single one of his players. And I know, like we was previously saying, when they said he would lay his life down for any one of his players, that's not a lie. I know that he cares about his players and his family more than anything else. So to hear these, all this bad stuff about McGlynn, it's really hard to hear, because I know him personally, and he's honestly one of the most upstanding, passionate, not only coaches, but people that I know. So just to hear this is hard, and I just wanted to kind of state that.
Great. Thank you so much, Jonah. Jonah, can you make sure you sign in too, please? Thank you for coming tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I thought that Andy made a lot of great points, and so did the rest of the parents. I just wanted to emphasize about the lessons that McGlynn actually taught us. Now, I previously, I hated football before. You know, I thought that, like, and I thought McGlynn was a crazy psychopath, but I decided, you know what, during senior year, I figured that I wanted to do something that I really hated, to prove myself that I could do anything else and face upcoming challenges that I would face in the future. And McGlynn, as well as many of the other coaches, helped me through, helped me through the season, and throughout the, throughout the season, he's taught us, taught all of us on the team, really important lessons. I recall that during one of, during one of our matches against a team, the opponents on the other team made racial remarks toward our players, and instead of, and instead of McGlynn trying to, instead of trying to fight back, he instead told us to just stay there, just ignore them, and to play football. And I think that this is really important, because one of the lessons that, the lesson that I learned from what he taught us to do was tolerance, was to ignore the hate that was being given by other players, and to just play the game, do what you're supposed to do, and enjoy the positive aspects of life. And, you know, after playing football for a season, I really learned that McGlynn was not truly the person that was, that he was being described as by the other people who were here in the last meeting. He's, the lessons that he taught us were a testament to who he really is, and I feel like that, that what was said against him was wrong, and that he's really an upstanding guy. All of the parents here and all the players here have been here to testify to that point. I just want to emphasize on the lessons that he taught us.
Thank you very much. Can you make sure you sign in too?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Constantine Losenzulis, and I am here to fighting against allegations towards Richard McGlynn. I feel that these allegations were definitely, came out of context, because, like, I've had Richard McGlynn as my coach freshman year and my senior year, and throughout that part of my life, Richard McGlynn has been very memorable to me. He's, he's taught me, like, so many things. He taught me how to fulfill a commitment, how to stand up in front of a crowd like I am today, and to stay strong, to be powerful, and to have, like, faith within myself and with others. And he taught me the very definition of what it means to be a family. Like, I was quiet, shy, and, you know, like, I had many issues throughout my family, and Richard McGlynn was one of those few people who actually saw that. And he would help me, like, see what it means to stay strong and powerful and to keep a family together, and that is what I'm here to do today. This is a man who, throughout my senior year, we had a consolation game, and I also, I'm a president of a youth group, which we have many retreats, and we had a retreat at and we had a retreat at the Pokonos. This is a man who was, without hesitation, willing to have me go to the game, and drive me hours to go to the Pokonos, and drive back that same night, that very same night. That's one of the millions of examples that I can tell you about Richard McGlynn, of who he is. 'Cause he, who he is, is he is a person who is a victim of rumors and lies spread to him throughout high school. I mean, we've all been through high school, you've all been through high school, they're in high school, they know. Rumors and stuff spread all the time. And then once they reach about, it's, it's a hearsay scenario, you know? Once they hear it, people believe it, and then they spread it even more. He's one of those victims. He, people, they don't know Richard McGlynn truly until they have him as a coach, or they know him as a friend. And we've all known him as a coach. He has not abused us, he has not hit us. If anything, he had a, he has taught us more stuff than I think I've learned from my own family. And I'm here to emphasize that, and to help you realize that Richard McGlynn, he is the victim. He is the victim of rumors and lies spread by other people. And to those who believe that they know who he is, you don't. I'm here to tell you, you don't. Because if you really get to know him, and you really get to see who he really is, as a person, not only as a coach, but as a person, you realize that all these allegations were false. And, uh, I know, because my life is that proof. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Make sure you sign in for us there as well.
I'm Justin Sims. I graduated last year. Um, I played for Coach McGlynn all four years, and I've basically known him, like, basically all my life, 'cause my stepdad and I coached together, and we're very good friends. I've basically seen it all from him, like, basically, summer camp as a kid for me was going to football practice. Um, I've helped him move from several places. I've basically seen him feed kids who didn't have food at home. He basically did whatever he could. He was basically a founding figure in my eyes, and for other players. And I mean, it hurts to see what's going on right now, I'm not gonna lie. Um, he's basically one of those people, I mean, he's really, like, he's really passionate about the sport, but I mean, at the same time, he cares about everybody, he coaches every single one of his players. I mean, I had a decent senior season after tearing my ACL, but I won't forget my last game of my high school career, he pulled me and Ryan aside, and I was like, "Look, I want him to score." And I'm like, "Who, me?" He was like, "Yeah." He was like, "Why don't you run out?" "No." He's like, "It'll be open." That right there showed me who he was as a person, 'cause honestly, I didn't have to score. We could've gave Nasser the ball a hundred more times, and Nasser could've did what he wanted. But I mean, by him pulling me to the side and telling me, "We're gonna run," and I ended up scoring, I just looked at him, I was like, "Thank you." I mean, he hugged me and stuff, and I mean, right there showed me who he was. And I mean, honestly, I'm surprised Mac hasn't been walked away from this football program, because I've seen people off throughout the town talk down to him, talk about how he is as a coach, he's not a good coach, he's the reason why Highland Park's losing. Unfortunately, I've seen Highland Park at its highs and its lowest. I mean, my cousin Nate played, they went to States, they ended up losing, unfortunately. And now Highland Park's kind of changing as a town, and more so like a soccer town now. This year, they have seventeen kids, my freshman year, we had about thirty-four kids. Every year's starting to decline, and now they're looking at, "Oh, we need a new coach, we need a new coach." I'm sorry, but if I would've seen anybody else coach this year's team, probably would've been the same result. And I mean, when I tore my ACL, he was there for me more than anybody. He made sure I was doing, like, I was working out, building my knee strength, that way I was back for my junior year. Unfortunately, I still couldn't play, 'cause I wasn't cleared. But I mean, he was de, he was definitely dedicated, more than myself, actually, to making sure I was back there in the field. I was blowing off, like, PT and everything, but it was just him, he would still send me texts like, "Justin, you know, we need you, we need you. I want to see you and Noah play together." I mean, he definitely kept me motivated, as a student and an athlete, for sure. High school, I didn't do too good in, but, like, most kids like me wouldn't really be getting a second chance to play college football. He did whatever he could to make sure I did. He made sure I went to junior college workouts, tryouts, everything. He's talked to colleges that I'm still in contact with. He's done more for me than I've done for myself, more than anybody has done for me, and it's still sad to see that people are dragging his name in the dirt as if he's not a human. And I'm going to see him, and it's sad, because it's like, I see him with his kids, and it's like, wow, like, what is he gonna tell his kids if whatever happens, happens to him? This is somebody who they know, he has a very big heart. He'll do anything for anybody, as Maschina said. He, and I also don't forget about Evan. My freshman year, oh, I forget, he had a heart problem. Evan couldn't really take contact anymore. Any other coach would've put him to the side and said, "Just don't play football, go play soccer." Evan was a DB, he was a receiver like the rest of us. But at the same time, I was looking at Evan, like, "Why are you still playing? Like, you're gonna get killed out here." Mac was like, "Don't worry, we'll find something for him to do." He ended up becoming our kicker. My senior year, we was blowing out my touch, and it was like the fourth quarter, it was probably like thirty seconds left, blowing him out. Anybody else could've took an knee and ended the game. He looked at us, like, "Listen, we're gonna kick the field goal for Evan." Unfortunately, Evan missed, but it was just a thought that, like, wow, just like me, how I had to score. Evan had to get his time to shine as well. But I mean, hopefully, whatever happens, I hope it's something positive for Coach McGlynn, 'cause he's definitely made a huge impact on my life, and I thank him for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Look, I don't even have to say sign in now. I'm like a broken record. Thank you guys all so much, you've all been amazingly eloquent.
Can I just point out, um-
You, you do. So has everybody made public comment, who wants to make public comment?
All of you.
Thank you.
I just want to point out, most of us do not have any children in the district anymore, so we don't have to be here.
Sure.
But we chose to be here, correct? So we will do this, you know, whenever it's needed.
Did anyone else want to make public comment?
I just want to make a-
Can, can you come up to the microphone?
Small suggestion. I had written a letter to Dr. Taylor the day after the original meeting, and I just was looking through it, and I just wanted to bring up one point, and I'm hoping that it won't be too specific, but it, it's regarding one of the allegations, which was, well, let me just read it, it's one-
Is it your own personal information, or is it-
No, no, it's just my thoughts on this particular area. If you need me to stop, just let me know.
Will do.
I don't think it's-
Thank you. I appreciate that.
It goes on to say, "As you know, the demographic has changed in this town over the last twenty years or so. As a result, the number of players on the football team has steadily declined to the point where it has become almost necessary to actively pursue players from the school to come out and play. This is not abuse, stalking, or harassment. As a parent, if Coach Mac is or was asking your son to play football, this is because he's just trying to regenerate interest in the sport in this town. And he thinks your son is talented enough to be very good at it. Either way, this is something that's very positive, that parents should really embrace and be appreciative of. And what I saw at that original meeting was something completely the opposite. They weren't appreciative of any of his efforts." So, that's the end of that point. And when Dr. Taylor was speaking earlier about the, you know, and I just, I can't be expected to recite everything about it, but, uh, the Pathway Program, a couple of things I jotted down, and I do have a suggestion. You're talking about discipline and being held, holding the kids accountable. I have a perfect, perfect example of a person who should be enrolled in that program right away, and it's the main accuser.
I think we're, yeah, I think we're pretty, I think we're at where, I think we're at where, I think we should probably really stop.
Yeah, it'd be awesome. So, anyway, that's it. But thank you very much.
You can just sign in there.
So, uh, two things here. First, I've been asked to have you recopy this, because there have been more signatures added to it. Um, I don't know who I give this to, but if you want it, it'll-
And you sent, you signed, signed in as well, yeah?
Uh, yeah, I just-
Okay, thank you.
Uh, second thing, I'd like to speak to McGlynn's values again. Ever since we even went to Bartle, Irving, the middle school, we've had this idea of perseverance and respect drilled into our minds, and never had I really seen this take fruition in an individual until I met McGlynn. Even in middle school, he was teaching us that you can't give up when you're playing a sport, that you have to continue to try, even if you're not good at it. Then, you know, move on to high school, a couple of years later, I just stopped playing ice hockey, and McGlynn sees me one day and goes, "Dylan, you wanna try football for the first time?" Never even really picked up a football outside of gym, but I said, "Sure, why not?" A few months later, I find myself on a football field, trying a sport I've never even dreamed of playing, and can only really thank McGlynn for that. He gave me an opportunity to meet new people, uh, to do something I had never done, and, uh, you know, that's really special, especially because, uh, even through the hardest season in our school's history, uh, ever since it was created, uh, haven't gone 0-10 since our first year. And he's used to winning, but this year, he couldn't win, uh, and yet he still kept trying every day at practice. He came back and said, "We're gonna try to do our best, we're gonna try to make sure we win this Friday, Thursday, Saturday, whatever day the game was on, uh, whatever game it was, he kept saying, 'This is gonna be our first one.'" And that means a lot to some of us, especially some of us who have played and, uh, been unable to win yet, because this is our first season, and it may even be our last season, uh, especially with the way the team's going right now, but if this was, say, to be our last season, then it's really unfortunate that we won't be able to finish the season without McGlynn, or to finish without a win. So, even without that, I'd still like to thank McGlynn for the opportunity to play a sport, uh, I may have un, uh, otherwise been unable to do, and for this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
I would like to add on to that, being, McGlynn was the very first person who ever told me, "Hey, you should play football." At first, I was like a really scared person, and I never thought I might be big and muscular, but I don't think I can do football. But then he encouraged me to do middle school football. I did this, of course, behind my parents' back, because they're, they don't think I can do it. But I would like to add on to what everyone has been saying about McGlynn. He's very passionate about the sport, and the things that people have been saying about him, I, I just, I, I just can't, I can't. I don't understand why people make these bad rumors about him, especially, 'cause he's one of the, he's like a second dad to me, honestly, and, for people to make these, um, bad, just say these bad things about him, this just really makes me want to cry. I had, like, this really bad situation during the season, and it, I actually had to go to the hospital many times, and he allowed me to go every time. He's not like one of those coaches who would be like, "Hey, Stan, just stay here for, like, a couple hours, and then you can go." He allows me to skip practice for this. He doesn't, he's like the best guy I have ever met, as like a teacher and a coach, by far. He is my favorite coach, and to see him in this situation, honestly, hurts. I'm sorry, I can't say that much, 'cause it's probably gonna be redundant, especially what everyone's saying. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, does anybody else want to make public comment?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Melanie McDermott, and I live at South, 330 South, Third Avenue, and I am trying to mentally change gears, uh, to talk about a very different topic, but one that I'm also really passionate about, and I think Highland Park is passionate about, and that is sustainable jersey for schools and our broader efforts, um, across all the green teams in each schools to do our part in Highland Park to address our global challenges locally. So along the lines of sort of updating the board about what has been happening, and general cheerleading for the team. Last November 2nd, the Highland Park District Green Team met for the first time this year, and our board representative wasn't able to attend, so I thought I would just convey the highlights, and then also talk about some actions that I think the board could take to further our efforts. So, we talked about a number of developments, and, um, I guess I'll focus on the going forward, rather than, um, everything we've achieved, although, um, in that regard, um, one of the areas that is a sort of sustainable jersey action area, and also so important to the health and well-being of our students, is a program called Breakfast After the Bell. So on the achievement side, um, as you know, Bartle School very successfully introduced this program last year, and, um, by all reports, both from both teachers who were present, and all, um, we heard from the principal last year, it's been a resounding success, and very significantly has not had some of the impact that other schools have expressed concern about, um, such as, you know, disruption from the start of classes, or messes in the school. And so towards that end, um, one of our community members, Amina Magali, who's a talented film editor, volunteered her time to make a video that, um, will be showing to the Irving School, to try to encourage the Irving School to take the steps to become a Breakfast After the Bell school. So without going into great detail, this program, you know, feeds hungry children. And we're talking about an achievement gap in our school district, and that's, you know, there are different ways of framing it, but let's just say that, um, evidence clearly shows that kids who are hungry don't learn. They're hyperactive, they lead to behavioral issues. So we have tools to attract federal dollars into our district, and I believe that Bartle School is actually running a profit on this program, to deliver, um, the federally funded schools to our, um, low, whatever the proper term is-
Free and reduced lunch?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Free and reduced lunch. Students, um, but the key that makes something Breakfast After the Bell is that they have the opportunity that even if they arrive at the last minute for school, they still have a chance to receive this. So at Bartle, they deliver packets to the classes. There are different strategies to use for every school. For Irving, the pattern would probably likely be very similar. So this, in addition to, um, an opportunity to show the video in the Irving staff session, we, the Bartle School has also invited the, the principal, the food services, and any concerned teachers to come and see how they- to come and see how they run things at Bartle. Word is that there is some concern from staff, and there's a little bit of, I don't know if I want to say pushback, or a little bit of concern and resistance about would this be disruptive. So, there's nothing like a successful example to get past that. We're very concerned that our, that our principal will be going on maternity leave, and so if we miss this opportunity to get the, get Irving on board and formally adopting this, that that will be a missed opportunity. I will just quickly state that the middle school has its own set of challenges, there are allergy issues that have to be addressed, there are some creative ideas about how to do that. And then, at the high school, the new schedule that Principal Lassiter sort of thought accomplished, and it does accomplish a great deal of what is needed in that breakfast is still available in the cafeteria for the first period. It's not after the bell. If a student who arrives, say, they only start second period, if they're not allowed to bring it into the classroom, that's not breakfast after the bell. For that individual, they don't have the opportunity to, you know, eat breakfast after school has already started. Similarly, some students, like my own, have first period class, so if they aren't allowed to bring the lunch, I mean, sorry, the breakfast into class, it's not breakfast after the bell. So, in this, this is one instance, but I, I will point to several others where I think there is a role for the board here, because it's not a requirement for Sustainable Jersey, let's say, for, for schools to receive points, to have a district policy, but I think it might be, and I would, you know, welcome thoughts from both the board and the superintendent, it might move this thing forward were the board to say, "It is a policy of sustainable, you know, of our, sorry, of our school district that we promote Breakfast After the Bell across all of our schools, and we leave it up to the principals and the staff to work out how to implement, but we, the board, endorse this as school policy. We think our children who are students who are entitled to this support be able to receive it in the way that most supports them." So, anyway, so that's a proposal, a board action, and I'm sort of not being my most coherent self tonight, maybe because I'm moved by the testimony that I heard, and I also came from another event for Sustainable Highland Park. To back up for a minute, district-level actions earn points for each four of our four schools. And to back up even further, I'm very excited about the prospect for what Sustainable Jersey can, schools can be in our school district, but I'm also, at the same time, concerned. It's a tall order, and we've received the honor, earned the honor, of every single school in our district being bronze certified. Next year, we come up for recertification, and I, at this moment, don't see us being in place to be recertified. I think it's totally doable, but we need more involvement from the community. We have great teachers involved, but we also need a community who can support them. We also need students, I'd like to see students coming to the green team. The high schools, well, you know, got a very dynamic green team, but each school, the students have something to offer. Basically, we need more hands-on deck to do the documentation work that this takes. District-level actions are key to our success, because anything, again, I'm repeating myself, but any district-level action, the points accrue to all four schools. So, I guess both in the sense of like our district achieving the recognition that it deserves in the Sustainable Highland, Sustainable Jerseys for Schools program and allied programs, but also achieving the, the real ends that can be, that are so warranted for our students who deserve to receive the services. It's, it's, again, I just get, I just urge you to take under consideration making this a board policy. I want to highlight of the different programs I could speak to, the different policy actions I could speak to, I just want to briefly touch on one other and sort of queue up a third. And I've been in contact and in dialogue with our superintendent and our business administrator, both of whom have been very supportive. And this has to do with energy efficiency for school facilities. There is a state program that our municipality is also participating in, and I think there may be some synergies there that I'd like to explore. Basically, the state contractor provides a free energy audit, and on the basis of that audit recommends energy efficiency actions that can save schools money, as well as reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. But it does require quite a bit of homework. It does require pulling together the utility bills, basically, for, I think, the past three years, and our business administrator has her hands full doing a lot of necessary things for our school. I think this is an excellent project for an intern, or possibly even a funded person, because this will pay dividends. I could quote you figures, and I'm happy to supply them to the district, of other schools that have netted, have saved money by implementing this. This is a program that our state wants to push out to local governments, municipal buildings, and school buildings count in this regard. So, again, all we have to do, we go online, we sign up, we provide our utility bills for the past three years, they send out an auditor, they give us a free audit, and they tell us, "These are actions you can take, and these are funding sources that you can tap to implement these actions." So, I think this is another area, not quite sure if that requires sort of policy action, or what the appropriate endorsement from the board is to move forward and to put the resources behind it to get it done. I just put that basically to you as a question. And then, without going, taking more of your time, there are other actions I, so one, for example, being anti-idling, that's a resolution that, you know, puts in place, these are not punitive, they're, they're, they're actions that schools can take, backed by the district, to encourage parents not to sit there with their engines running, or school buses for that matter, while they drop off or pick up kids. And policies can be put into place to minimize that and to sort of provide positive reinforcement where this idling activity goes on. I will address that maybe another day when we've taken that particular initiative a little bit further forward. But I just put that to you as an example where board action may really provide the impetus and the support that each school needs to figure out how to best implement that at their own school. So, without taking, again, going into more detail, I guess since our best-developed program is Breakfast After the Bell, it's the closest to being implemented, I wonder if the board has any questions or any thoughts about what it would mean to make this a district policy, that it's our policy in this district to, to run a Breakfast After the Bell program?
I'd have to think on that, honestly, and Anne is Chair of Policy, so I'll certainly run it by her, but it does, that does sound more procedural to me than policy-driven. Does Sustainable Journey Jersey, do you know of a model policy that pertains to Breakfast After the Bell, or?
That's a good question. I have to look into that. This, to be clear, the Sustainable Jersey for Schools action that has to be, that, you know, does not require a district policy.
Sure.
What I have observed, frankly, is different levels of commitment and sort of hesitancy about the program from among our four schools, without going into, you know, I might have to elaborate. So, leadership from some central level saying, "This is, this is a program," or, well, it's a policy, "that students who are entitled to nutrition before they start their school day will receive it at a Highland Park school." That sounds like a policy statement to me, the particulars of how you implement it...
To be honest, it sounds more like a goal to me. Do you know what I mean? Like, I mean, we, because there'd be so many parameters on that, and, I mean, clearly, there's a district, you know, initiative towards doing that, and I think the idea was to start it at Bartle, if I'm not mistaken, but, was to start it at Bartle and then to move out from there.
Right. So, Bartle's been successfully running the program since last...
Last, last year was the first year.
Yeah.
Still going.
Yep.
But not all of last year, right? It started like mid-last year?
I think January.
Yes.
We, this is actually a topic of conversation for tomorrow's leadership team meeting.
Great.
Biweekly meeting, and Linda Hoffler and I have been talking about a way that Breakfast After the Bell could potentially satisfy a federal, I'm not sure what the details are, but a federal requirement as well.
Right. Because of our num, our percentage of free and reduced, a certain percentage are required, we have a threshold that we have to participate in, and we're not at that threshold. And so, one of the corrective actions that they highly recommend is Breakfast After the Bell. So, we have been discussing it, so we do see the benefits of it, implementing it for the students, as well as, you know, to comply with certain mandates.
Well, that's, that's very encouraging, and that's certainly consistent with research. I mean, New Jersey as a state is not doing a good job of getting, you know, getting this nutrition to the students who are entitled to it. I, I can't quote you the exact figure, but it's, you know, and in Highland Park, we're even below the state average of what percentage of entitled students actually do receive breakfast. Now, some of this is behavioral, right? You know, anyone who has teenagers knows about this, but, but there, but there are solutions. So, I'm glad to hear that. I guess what I would like to see is a little bit of, you know, urgency and seeing this get in place. And in particular, we are going up for recertification next year. We, you know, for each school to receive points towards this, the policy has to be in place next year. That's not the end-all and be-all, but, you know, that's yet another reason for why, why we should get the ball rolling, is I guess what I say.
Do you think at a future meeting, you and Amina could come out and share the video with us?
Absolutely. I mean, I mean, yeah, the link, the link is there for all, for all to see.
Okay.
So, that's Breakfast After the Bell. On the subject of the energy audit, can I get a reaction or any support that you would need, Linda, or?
Oh, no, we are definitely on board for that. It's just, it's about the fifth or sixth thing down on my priority list, behind budget, unfortunately. I mean, unfortunately, because that takes a lot of time.
Right, right, right.
So, it is something that we definitely want to pursue, and it's just a matter of, you know, getting the documents together and, you know, moving forward with it.
And there's, there's no one you can delegate that to, or that could give you, or that you could request?
They're kept pretty busy in that office.
No, 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 I know that they are.
We lost somebody, a full-time person in our office about, was it five years ago? When all of those other people were cut?
Yeah.
And we were never restored, so we're short.
Yeah, so...
Very shorthanded in our office.
Um, I just put it forward that this is a upfront investment can yield down-the-road return, so I don't know if there's any mechanism to invest the pretty modest resources in providing some clerical support to get this job done, and tap into much greater resources that the state is kind of begging local governments to get their acts together and tap into. So, I don't know if they're interns, I don't know if they're, you know, small funds that can be invested to hire someone to help you out. Just throwing out some ideas.
We could discuss it at our next green team meeting.
Okay. I look forward to doing that.
Maybe there's some parents who'd like to come and volunteer their time.
Well, to all you in the listening audience...
I mean, members of the Sustainable, the Green Team.
Yeah, well, I can tell you, we, right now, are really keen to have additional volunteers get involved in something that really is, yields, I think, a lot of satisfaction. It's about making a difference locally. I think it is challenging, this sort of, there's administration, there are teachers, there's parents, there are students each occupying their different worlds. A really exciting thing about these efforts is that they're meant to cross-fertilize across these different categories, but everything from holding meetings during the daytime when our, you know, own board members are working, and having meetings at both staff, administration, parents can attend is, is challenging, but that's the notion of a green team. So, anyone who is interested in possibly volunteering, could be in something completely different, whatever your passion is, be it gardening, getting in the classroom, they're encouraged to contract Tracy Maiden at Bartle School, she's our leader.
Do you want to maybe send out a little description or something of what you're looking for and what kind of volunteers you need that the district can send out?
Well, I mean, Scott, you've done that, I mean, I'm happy to...
Can't hurt to do it again.
Do it again. I, you, you, you reach out to the staff, correct, in the last round?
I did.
Yeah, so...
But could you resend it? The information?
The information about being on a green team.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's what we're referring to.
Yeah, yeah, because I don't know...
Just to, so I have it back on my radar for...
Sure, sure, and are we talking about the, the parents and the community as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, that we can send something out to parents in the community.
To blast it out.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, does anybody else want to make any public comment? No? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the rest of our agenda, and thank everybody else for, everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, so first, curriculum instruction, Michelle?
Hello. I got a paper copy this time.
Huh?
Got a paper copy this time.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Okay, so...
Good night, everybody.
Good night. We start off with the committee report, and I hope all of you got it and got a chance to read through it. It was a pretty short meeting. We met December 11th. Wait, that's today. Why is that today? December 4th, I'm sorry. This is for the December 11th agenda. So, we discussed the return of the Social Emotional Learning Lab at Bartle, which is very exciting, and we're looking at a start date for January 2nd, it looks like. And Ruth suggested that we think about the middle school doing something similar. And Dr. Taylor thought that perhaps we could have a built-in social-emotional curricula into current subjects sometime in the future, but that right now, there's a lot on everyone's plate, but that that would be a good goal to, to shoot for. So, that it would, social-emotional learning will be built into, you know, subjects like social studies, history, language arts, and science. So, then we discussed restorative practices, as we heard in his report. So, it's been kind of a big chunk to chew, getting the district to change course in that way of discipline, and think about more restorative practices and restorative justice. But that there, it kind of made Dr. Taylor think that we, we do have like kind of an umbrella issue, or kind of an identity issue, as far as like what we're shooting for. So, the changes to our, our discipline are just a piece of that, that we discussed, and that, you know, there's kind of a topic, maybe, that we want to be known for in Highland Park, and maybe we need to discuss that, you know, as a community. So, this would be what I called the umbrella issue. So, we don't want to be known for restorative practices, per se, but we want to be known for, you know, having restorative practices in, in the overall umbrella issue. So, for example, you know, I brought up art, that we are, you know, an art-centric community, and that maybe art is the thing that we want to be known for. We have a great performing arts, I guess, community with it, without, you know, within the district, and so that was kind of my interpretation of like how we could look at the entire district and then like branch out all of the different ways that we translate that. So, but this is kind of a tremendous topic that we brought up and only kind of surface discussed. So, Dr. Taylor did say that, you know, maybe at a later time, we could have a district-wide type meeting, a community meeting about that. But that changing the school's culture is going to be difficult if we don't all kind of see the same vision in the same way in terms of that one umbrella issue, so it's something...
Geez, how would you narrow it down to one?
I mean, it could, like I said, it could, it could be as broad as something as the concept of art, you know, like something really conceptual. But that this was a huge discussion that we kind of just started talking about because of restorative practices and a culture shift in the school. of restorative practices and a culture shift in the school. Then, Dr. Taylor brought up the strategic plan and incorporating a townwide meeting in terms of what we just talked about, the umbrella topic. Then, let's see, we moved on to the agenda, item number four. It's a new course at the high school, it's Ceramics II, actually, and that is being proposed because of the increased enthusiasm enrollment for Ceramics I.
Ooh.
Yeah, cool, right? And then, we talked about the ceramics program at Bartle. I asked if that was still happening, because Ms. Crane was the arts teacher. I haven't had kids in Bartle School since then.
Oh, by the way, we just fired up the new kiln at Bartle for the first day today.
I was just going to ask.
First time.
Okay, because that was my question, was are we still doing that?
Yeah, we just started today.
Yeah.
I know, last year, the food still was made.
Yeah, I remember seeing it. I think it was like chorus concerts and things that you go visit. So, that's good news.
I walked into Ms. Ecclesius's room, and there was a How to Start Your Kiln book on her desk, really.
Oh, wow.
Just started up.
That's cool. Well, I'm very excited for that, that's great. Item number five, the agenda is a resolution to approve the recommendation to enter an affiliation agreement with Rutgers on behalf of the Department of Psychology Internship Consortium, effective January 2nd. So, these would be the students that, from Rutgers, who come in to provide services via our social emotional decision-making lab at Bartle. And it wouldn't be, you know, open 24/7, of course, it would be kind of according to their availability, and I would hope, you know, that staff would know who to send and when to send them. So, I'm sure that's all details that will be worked out as far as, you know, Mr. Benjamin's leadership there, but.
And is the agreement just till the end of this year? Is it a?
It's going to start in the middle of January.
No, no, but for how long?
Oh, forever.
Forever.
No, really, I mean, we're looking to re-institutionalize it, so it's not just a rest-of-year thing, it's going to continue.
But it's not memorialized with any kind of end date, or?
No, 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 that, this memorandum of agreement has no expiration. But if you're thinking of codifying what we're doing in some way, you know, I'm not sure how we would do that, other than the strategic plan.
That might be a question for the policy committee? If there's some way to codify that in policy?
No, I mean, I was thinking more, I mean, if you're entering into an agreement with someone, I mean, I don't know, when we entered into the memorandum of agreement with the GSE, was that very, just open-ended as well?
I'm, don't know, I didn't go back to the last agreement, but this one does not have an end date, so. I just, look, I think obviously it takes commitment of people, and that commitment was lost. But, you know, but yeah, we have to, we have to think about how we can institutionalize it again.
That's a good thing to address, though, just because, you know, personnel does change, boards change, leadership changes, so how do we, you know, really make that forever, forever?
That was my next question, is like, is there then a point person in the district who's the, you know, the in-house person who's?
Well, right now, it's Ms. Maiden. And the problem with relying on one or two people to carry this on is when they leave, which was the case with Ms. Porter Beckey, so does the lab.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, the way all, the literature we read in my field says to do it is you get everybody to buy in, and they all have ownership, so nobody wants it to go away. So, if Ms. Maiden leaves, somebody else picks it up.
Right, so is that a stipended position? Is that a, like, how is that, how is that working?
No. She is doing it, right now, as part of a project for a class, but once the class is over, she still wants to commit to it. For as long as we have somebody at Rutgers who's helping us, this shouldn't be a, of course, the principal has to be there to help manage the program on-site if Ms. Maiden doesn't. But, I mean, we could consider building into somebody's schedule. Could be something Ms. Crane doesn't. Look, we're looking to weave this into our discipline approach, and that is what, part of what Ms. Crane does.
I was just going to suggest that, that maybe we codify, you know, the task, not personnel.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so just say, you know, somehow that someone should be staffing or recognizing this staff position or task.
We could update the job description to include that as a responsibility. I mean, I'm processing this with you right now, I'll think about it some more, but that's a definite good start.
I mean, it could, it could be something under the principal's jurisdiction, kind of the principal's responsibility is to make sure that someone is in that role.
I'll put it on the radar.
Job description thing, then, I don't know, but that's a.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm just, I'm keenly sensitive to the disappearing when the person disappears.
Right.
So, we don't want that to, don't want that to happen again. Because I think we saw the negative ramifications of that for years later.
Yep.
For sure. So, moving along, we have the Chinese exchange follow-up that we discussed in our committee meeting. Dr. Taylor is going to be bringing this up in old business, so we can discuss that further then. The health curriculum, grades six to 12 follow-up. The health education is currently on hold at those grade levels due to personnel issues, so that we will have to hire someone to fill in for health on a temporary basis. Dr. Taylor mentioned that he's been in touch with our friend Johanna from South Orange Maplewood Board of Ed, and also from decades of experience in that field. So, it's possible that she could be hired as a consultant to work with our middle school and high school, assume.
And I do have an update, since that meeting.
Oh, good.
She's agreed to help us, and we have a phone conversation scheduled for Wednesday, so we'll flesh it out some more then.
Wonderful, yeah. Just want to recognize who she is. She is someone that we met at the board conference down in Atlantic City. Well, I met her two years ago, three years ago, three years ago. And, yeah, she's, she's got decades of experience of coaching and, and teaching health and sex So, let's see. Gender integration in our sex ed classes is something that Dr. Taylor has decided is best practice for our district after surveying most of the districts in the central New Jersey area. It looks like most of them have all of the students in one room, or at least have the students, you know, mixed as far as gender identity goes, in their sex and health ed, health and sex ed courses. So, that is, is a determined thing now. The integration of genders will hopefully be codified in our own policy soon via the policy committee, so that will be coming up. Irving Specialized Program for Behaviorally Challenged Students Follow-Up. You'll remember this as the very expensive program.
Yes.
That we did not take part in. We found a different way to address this issue, and that was to hire Kim Holman, I believe her name is. I didn't write down her last name.
That sounds bad.
Right, Holman? Sorry. She's a mental health specialist, and she provides wraparound services and direct intervention with 12 of our Bartle and Irving students and their families. So, she gave us, I think it was a four-page write-up of her responsibilities and what she was able to do with these students and their families. And it's a thorough, I want to say therapy, but it's not therapy, per se, but it's, it's a wraparound service in the way that I always understood wraparound services. You know, there's home visits, there's all kinds of therapeutic things happening to support the students, and, let's see, she does push-in work and counseling with the teachers and the paraprofessionals that are involved with these students' experience in our schools, which I kind of found to be the most important part of this, is that not only is she talking to the students and their families, but she's talking to the teachers and the paraprofessionals that have contact with those students. So, that everyone is not only on the same page as far as goals, but that everyone is using similar language, understanding how to support this student, and what's working, what's not working. So, it was, to me, it seemed pretty, you know, comprehensive. She was coincidentally recommended to us by Dr. Elias, and the program that we could have gone with, it was going to be, I remember it being $600,000, but this is a $400,000 number that I'm seeing. That was going to implement UBHC, but instead of doing that, we chose to hire this one mental health specialist in district to work with this specific group that was identified. And so, not only did we save an enormous amount of money, but we were able to really target the money that we did spend, and to, you know, use an effective strategy, it seems like. Dr. Taylor did mention that, there was a suggestion made by Darcy, actually, that he's rolling around and thinking about and would like us to know about, and that's making Irving School a community school where wraparound services would be available to our district families, so district-wide support services. And if you have any questions about that, that would be great to talk about, because that's a really great concept.
I have to thank Darcy for that idea.
Yeah.
That's true, I'm sorry if you mentioned that.
Yeah, it's funny, I put that in the report, I gave credit to Dr. Taylor, but he made sure to tell me that.
Well, I don't want to take credit for something that ain't mine.
Then, we talked about school discipline and changing the models from one to another, and you heard all about that in his report. Our meeting was about an hour and a half, it was pretty short, so pretty light on curriculum. So, if you have any questions.
I love that we consider an hour-and-a-half meeting short.
We're nerds. It's, it's good. Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Michelle? Nope. Nope, all right, awesome.
I see a question. Oh.
It's not specifically for Michelle, but going back to, because it's not central to her report, but it goes back to the field trip requests. One of the things that keeps coming up every year, and it sort of bothers me a little bit, the amount of trips for the senior class with Dorney Park and the cruise trip and the prom and everything coming up at the end of the year. I did speak to one or two seniors last year, and they said that they start paying for these things at the beginning of the school year, so that way, it doesn't really hit them financially at the end of the school year. And I just wanted to ask the seniors if that's still true. Okay.
Well, I mean, in terms of the senior trips, we don't start paying for those in September. We actually haven't even started full plans yet. The idea is to start around January, so it's not right at the end, but it's also not over the course of the, whatever, nine months or 10 months, or whatever.
Our class is also still trying to gauge interest as to how many students to see where the price is, so it also takes a while to figure that out.
Okay, so it's not, so it's not just something that, it's on paper, it's something that you guys consider also whether or not you're going to move forward with it?
It's basically confirmed that there will be a senior trip. The problem is that our grade in particular has trouble generating interest early on and having commitment to the trip, so without a certain number of people committing to going, the trip can't happen. So, that's one of the reasons I think it's maybe less clear this year, but, but ultimately, I mean, the most likely outcome is that it will happen, and that, like as usual, it'll be the students and the parents who are making the entire contribution.
We also make contributions and installments and payments, so it's less financial.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so let's move on to financing facilities, Mark?
Yes, thank you. So, the finance committee met this evening at 6:00 with the committee, which is myself, Darcy, and Rob Magaziner, and with Linda, and with Dr. Taylor. We went over the list of items on the finance agenda, one of which I want to point out, and then we went over some other items that are independent of the finance agenda. So, one item that we're going to see tonight is one set of items, or items five through seven, which are for out-of-district placements and transfers, and new students with special ed or special needs. And if you add the numbers, the increases, the increases are not on the agenda, but if you add the increases, it comes to $150,000 approximately that was not budgeted. Now, that's in addition to more than 200 or 250,000 unbudgeted for pre-K placements, and additional several hundred thousand for special ed, out-of-district placements that were just not in the budget. We have a giant budget for special education placements, but these are just additional students who are in the district, are moving in the district, or in this case, who need a placement. And I'm going somewhere with this, so just give me one second, I'll, I'll get to the punchline. In addition to that, we went over the, the new apartment complex called Merry World up on River Road. That's outside the area where students can walk to school. It's on the other side of the railroad, it's not safe, so we have to send a bus there. We've had a number of student requests, and we're anticipating many more students, and we have to get a bus. Linda put out a bid with the companies for a smaller bus. I think there's four students so far, but they won't bid it, so we're looking at a large, a full-size bus. That'll cost us $40,000 for the rest of the year, and that should cover the majority of the number of students that we'll see over the next few years, but you never know, we might need more. The other buildings in the town, the new building in the town, don't require busing because they're inside walking distance. So, that's some additional expenditures that we went over. We start, we discussed the budgeting process, and the budgeting process, which Dr. Taylor will present in a little while, starting this year, late this year, and going into early next year, and then culminating in a budget in the spring. I looked at the numbers and presented it to the committee and discussed with the committee. At this time last year, the board was running, or the district was running, a $600,000 surplus. That is to say, fewer students enrolled with special needs, we didn't need extra buses, the heat costs less than we thought, all the kinds of things that would give us money that we could use to abate tax increases. And in fact, at the end of the year, we put approximately $800,000 into, from the 2016-17 budget into the 2017-18 budget, and that was, we were able to, by using that, keep the costs down to a reasonable tax increase. This year, we're literally at a break-even point. All these extra expenses that we went over, and the report that Linda presented to us, show that we're literally at break-even. We may accrue some savings as we move on in the year, there's some items that may give us savings. So, also, anything can happen with anyone moving into town, and there might be more expenditures, but assuming that we only can save a little bit more and build up a small surplus, we discussed moving forward in the year, being very careful in this year about discretionary spending in this year's budget. We can't spend money in this year's budget that we don't have, and we won't have, and we may not so much run out of, but just not have any surplus working capital. We have to have that. So, we discussed doing that, and I think Dr. Taylor is going to make some, make some direction towards that happening. And then, next year's budget is going to be very difficult. We have 2% cap that we're allowed by law to increase the taxes. We will get some waivers for the large increases in medical. One of the costs, one of the costs that's hurting our budget is that the, we budgeted the amount that the state told us for medical, medical expenses, increases, but in fact, the real increase was $90,000 more. So, that, that's one of the other reasons we don't have a surplus, because that $90,000 just came right off the bottom line. So, we just have to be very, very, very careful, and with the medical addition, we're allowed to raise, increase taxes by a little bit more, probably less than 1% more. So, we really have not much money to spend next year. It's going to be a, looks like a very difficult and very standstill, unfortunately, kind of budget. It does depend somewhat on, somewhat on what the new governor proposes, and you never know, but we can't count on that at this point, we have to be very careful. So, that was the bulk of our meeting today, unfortunately, but it's early.
It was not a cheery meeting.
It wasn't a cheery meeting, and it's, it's really, it's, I had been feeling it was worse than last year and the year before, but it is, you know, the numbers. You know, the numbers just aren't good, and they are numbers that aren't in our control.
And I think the piece that you didn't mention, too, is that there's no banked cap for this year, which we've relied on in the past.
Correct.
At least three, four budgets that I can remember. So we're out of banked cap, we're going to have very few waivers, and, and not a lot of money to roll over from this budget to the next budget. So, you know, it's important that we talk about these things as we're going into budgets, so, you know.
So, and in fact, in budget preparation, we talked about not having a wish list budget, but rather, let's move, move forward from where we are, but if you have to add something, something has to come back, because between mandated expenses, knowing that the medical insurance will go up, having a contract with the staff that has to be paid with an increase in it, we, we have to hold the line on other expenses unless we learn we're getting a lot more from the state, or unless some surplus shows up, unless, you know, whatever, but we're going to really have to hold the line. There isn't any giant wish list this year, unfortunately. So be it. Not happy. But better to know it early and not, and not spend every penny this year, because if we don't spend it, we're going to lose it, which is the way a lot of organizations work, and then find out that we really, really under the gun next year. So it's good to know early. So with that, with those cheery, cheery news, let me go through the committee report, and then, you know, obviously, any questions. So number two is the general athletic and cafeteria bill, bill lists, as usual. Item three, and I don't know if we will have them, Linda, but perhaps next time you'll have more lists that come through the end of November, so we may see new ones. We have the travel and related expense reimbursement reports, number three. We have professional services, that's assistive technologies, speech and language therapy, and, pardon me, we have work that we're doing, which is paid out of the high school student funds, and that's for the full sets for the drama. Items five and six and seven are items for out-of-district placements, and seven is bedside instruction, but five has two items, A and B, going over new updated tuition rates. Five B has updated tuition rates, students changing schools, and item six has a student who's going into the Career Center at the Somerset County Educational Services Commission, new, costing us $66,000 unbudgeted dollars. Item number eight is going to be a resolution to approve removal of a student from enrollment because the student isn't a resident of Highland Park, and I think Scott will be talking, Dr. Taylor will be talking later on about the reregistration efforts, so that we find students who aren't living here, who moved, you know, whatever reason, that should be going to school where they live, not in Highland Park. Item eight is services related to the Genesis system that we use in order to do bulk emailing. Item 10 is purchase of the ductless heating and cooling systems, which we've, we're offered a better rate on buying them now, and they're in the budget, they're not the unbudgeted items that we might have wanted, or if we had spare surplus, these are the ones that were budgeted. And item 11 is the, is going to resolve that we buy this from General Plumbing Supply in Edison for the $15,998.65. Items 12 and 13 relate to a motor in one of the basketball backstops, and we are going to vote to award that contract in item 13. Items 14 and 15 are resolutions regarding the financial report, including corrective action. And Linda, do you want to say a few words about 15 and the corrective action?
Yes, there are, well, we don't have the documents yet from the auditors, which is why the corrective action plan isn't together, because I need their wording. And I'm, I'm actually thinking that it might be better to report on the whole thing next week?
Okay.
Only because we need to have it in the minutes?
It's fine.
Okay.
It's fine, we'll do, we'll do it, we'll do it next time, but there is going to be a report, the auditor will be coming next month, they couldn't be here this month. Linda will report that to us, a report out on it once she gets the report before next, during next week's meeting, and then the corrective action plans, what look to me to be, I hate to say these words, minor items that need to be corrected, and we'll get a report on that next time. And that's the agenda.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mark?
Going back to the Merry World development, you were saying that we're looking at for pricing for buses, is that for two buses?
No, no, there's four students right now, so we, we're looking for one bus.
Oh, one bus now, okay.
And we're, I mean, we're, we will expand as the development expands and as the needs grow, but we anticipate one bus for quite a while.
Oh, okay, because I think, I think, based on the size, based on the demographic report, that we anticipate a lot of the students, we were looking at probably like 50-some students, the way I did the math.
Right, right.
Yeah, the number, the number that, I was doing some back, you know, back of the envelope, it could be as many as 50. I don't know how many the bus, you know, the bus holds, a bus holds, but that may be over time.
Yeah, over time, we might have to expand further.
Okay, for, for, for the developments that are on the other side, do we have one bus that makes two trips, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we had two bus, there, two buses would make two trips, they'd just spread out a little more.
Thank you.
And we actually looked at the enrollment numbers tonight, too, and we're kind of surprised to see that we're actually like a little bit down from where we were last year.
I, I, I don't think we were that sure, so I didn't want to talk too much about it, but it looked to me, when I looked at the numbers and compared it to exactly this time last year, that there were 50, it looked like that day or days that we counted, there were 50 fewer students, approximately 1,625 students, as opposed to last year, 1,675 students. And again, it might be an anomaly, it might be when we counted, it's surprising, and it's perhaps good news and bad news. You know, it may have to do with reregistrations, you know, people seeing the reregistration and the, and the child suddenly isn't here anymore, anything is possible. I, I just don't know. I don't think we have an answer. Well, as time goes on, we'll get a better answer.
If I can make one comment.
Yeah.
Last year's senior class was exceedingly large.
Right.
There was 140 students.
Right.
So when you lose a very large class.
Yes, yes, yes.
And you bring in a normal-sized class, that could, that alone could account for the reduction in the number of students.
Yeah.
We had 140 high, 12th graders last year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and we're, we're a small enough district that unless that becomes a trend, which in my previous lifetime, it did become a trend, and it went down and down and down and down.
Good night, ladies, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
No, no apologies necessary.
It might, you know, it might become a trend, it might go the other direction, but it was just surprising to me that it had gone down by so many.
And talking about Merry World and enrollment, it makes me think of something else I meant to bring up, or we kind of ran out of time in committee. It may be interesting, and I don't, I guess you would probably be the one to do the outreach to the borough as we're doing the budget, to see, I don't know when they find out what their ratables are, so that when we're putting everything together, if the ratables we would expect would increase again, because at Merry World, there's more tax, you know, there's more ratables there, that might give us a better, because we kind of changed it.
It made an enormous difference to us last year.
Huge difference in terms of the amount.
It was $800,000 in difference for us, because they brought in literally $800,000 of new applicable to the schools of taxes.
So I'm thinking the earlier we can find out what that number is, the better, and the more it will help us in our presentations to say, okay, yes, we're increasing it 3%, but your, the amount to you is actually going to decrease.
Yes, right. That's right.
How much of the development is full?
I don't know.
I don't think it is now.
You just started within the last couple of weeks, getting the, yeah.
Oh, no, they're, they're in the early stages.
Yeah, 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 but that's what I was saying, you just started getting the transportation requests.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so the effect, the effect.
But I think some of the other ones are now full that maybe weren't full before, and, you know.
But then there's two, two new other ones coming.
Over the next few years, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be dramatic. So an idea that Scott and I pitched, too, we met, what, a couple of weeks ago with Gail, Gail, Mayor Gail Braille-Mittler, and, council president Suzie Wolkowitz, I can't get the words out, a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about putting together a, kind of like a joint task force almost, between borough folks and districts folks to, to talk about, you know, as, you know, to just kind of have a.
There's a lot of change.
There's a lot of change going on, and how we're going to, how we're going to handle that effectively, both on the borough end and the district end.
Just so everyone understands that, we might, we would still raise the, let's say, 3%, but the 3% would be a much lower tax rate.
Right.
So when you looked at the tax rate, we were anticipating, I'm just pulling numbers out of the air now, $240 per average house or something increase, and with the additional money that came in from the, from the new developments, the new taxes, it went down to $80. It was an enormous, enormous difference.
I think it was like $150 to like $80, yeah.
Yeah, enormous difference. They, yeah, they paid for the majority of the tax increase, was subsumed by the new taxes that came in. And it surprised me when I did the numbers at the time, because it made no sense, but they just bring in, you know, there's almost a million dollars in new taxes, so that just, that just lowered everything. So fingers crossed.
Right.
It's always difficult, because we, we have so little to work with.
One more question. Item 10 and 11, what school is that for? The ductless heating and cooling units?
Isn't that?
They're for Bartle and for high school.
Bartle and high school.
There's a few left at Bartle, but most of them are going to be going to the high school.
And they, they're heating and cooling?
They do both.
Just as a supplement to the rest of the heating.
Well, I don't know that they're going to be, actually, they, no, these are, I don't know that they'll necessarily be using them for heating, but I suppose that if there's a supplemental need, that they could provide it.
Okay. But these are, these are pretty much strictly for air, right, to keep it comfortable?
Yes, I assume the same things that we've been doing for the last couple of years.
Right, same as we've been doing at Bartle.
Okay, if no one has any, anything else for Mark, we will move on to personnel with Judy.
Okay. So, last week, Ann and Dr. Taylor and I did meet for, actually, quite a lengthy meeting, but it was good. And we mostly discussed the agenda items, we have a number of resignation, well, not, some new hires and some resignations, which I'll get to. We also talked a bit about the evaluation process, some of our principals are coming up for tenure review, and since Ann and I are new to that process, we were, we had a nice discussion about that. So I guess I'll just go through the agenda. Number two is payment to Ms. DeMarco, who has been writing the lesson plans for the Irving Media Center, because we do not have that position filled yet. Number three is some more Schedule B positions. And then number four, I'm sad to say that we are losing one of our high school guidance counselors, Kristen Alpoff, so her last day in district will be January 19th. Advertisements have already gone out for, to fill that position. As of last week, we had, that was the one that we had over 60?
At that point, 62, I haven't checked the number, but we're in good shape in terms of applicants.
And where do we stand on the process?
I won't have somebody to recommend to the board until the next January meeting.
January, okay, sounds good. And then, as Scott mentioned earlier, we also have the resignation of Ms. Rexler on the agenda, her last day being January 26th. We have a movement in the salary guide for Ms. Chang, who received her master's. And number seven. Yay, finally. I'm happy to say, we have found a new full-time media specialist for Bartle School, Edward Hanks, effective January 2nd, so that's very good.
May I say a few words about him?
Yes, please.
So his reference, well, we, we spoke to both, I should back up, the person who recommended him to us from the get is the coordinator of the Masters of Library Science Program at Rutgers, so that's a very high-profile reference, but his supervising teacher in Eaton Town, where he's currently student teaching, said he got children, understood, understands what children need to love reading, he loves books, always ready to be in the library, he got students excited about reading. Bottom line is, she said, if hired, you'll love him. So that's good news.
Yeah, and he came from a, sort of a different background, so he was actually a fine art major at Rutgers with his undergrad, and he has a lot of technical skills as well. And as Scott said, yeah, the head of the school media program at Rutgers recommended him, so that's really good. He'll be finishing up his degree this month, so he'll be ready to go. So, on that note, hopefully, the curriculum committee will start discussing a curriculum for the library program.
So, before you move on, I just want to like thank all the Personnel Committee and Scott for your diligence in making sure that this was filled, and, like, really, to, like, thank the community and the staff at Bartle.
For their patience.
For their patience. I mean, this was not our intention in any way, shape, or form to go this long into the school year without this position filled, and we hit this wall, this unanticipated wall, in terms of finding candidates that we just did not know was going to be there, so.
Let me tell you something, if you look in the Help Wanted ads, there are tons of people still looking for some media specialists. So I think our Rutgers connection really helped in this time.
Yeah, you have to network.
That's for sure. Well, so thank you all for, for tapping your networks as, as often and as gently and politely as you did.
So, fingers crossed. We have a appointment of a substitute for the weight room, Timothy Stark, for the winter season. Number nine, resolution of approval of agreement and release between the Board of Ed and employee number 0014, that the board attorney is hereby authorized to negotiate and prepare any and all documents that may be required to carry out this action of the board. 10 is approval of staff for the Professional Development Academy presenters. Then we have some, as usual, Bartle, Title I after-school tutoring teachers, and Irving, I think, as well. Yeah, dragons. So that kind of goes on for a couple of pages there. Oh, I want to backtrack a little. We did mention that we're losing Ms. Rexler, so we also have an advertisement out for a, two new English teachers, correct? Want an English teacher to cover Maureen's classes, right? And, I'm blanking out.
Megan's classes.
Megan McNally, correct.
So that's been going out. Scott, you touched on it, did you want to mention what the plan is for covering the restorative practices?
So Ms. McNally's schedule was mostly general education, she only taught my special education class. Ms. Rexer taught two classes, and then the rest of her, both general education classes, both teachers are English teachers. The rest of Ms. Rexer's time is, of course, the dean of restorative practice work she did. We would like to hire a, a full-time maternity, oh, not, I'm sorry, replacement teacher to fill in for Ms. McNally, that will be a general education teacher, and a, I'm sorry, a special education teacher, and I'll explain why in a second, and a general education teacher to cover all of Ms. Rexer's classes. What we would like to do is shift Ms. McNally's general education classes over to Ms. Rexer's schedule, to make it a full-time schedule. So I will be recommending somebody on next Monday night's agenda to take that position, I just interviewed her. And the other teacher we're looking for is going to be a special education teacher, who'll pick up that one class that Ms. McNally had, and then she will help reduce some class sizes in special education, in the other areas that we have a need, particularly resource room. So we're going to create multiple sections of special education, resource room at the middle school. So we're, we have two, two vacancies, both full-time, we want to replace them with two people. One would be to cover Ms. McNally, just from January to June, that's going to be a special education teacher. education teacher, and the other will be permanent replacement from Ms. Rexler, general education. I hope that makes sense. Mark, it doesn't seem too-
No, it doesn't seem, it doesn't make sense exactly to me.
Because Maureen was only teaching-
Maureen was teaching two classes and was Dean of Restorative Practices.
Right.
So, that's one person, and we're gonna replace Ms. Rexler, and we're going to hire an English teacher, that's two people.
Megan is filling in for the Irving.
Yeah, no, I know that.
So, that second one is just until the end.
So, we're gonna shift the classes away from Ms. McNally that she was teaching to fill up Ms. Rexler's schedule for this person we're gonna hire. So, you know what I mean? So, Ms. McNally taught five classes, one was a special ed, four were general ed. We're gonna take as much as we can out of Ms. McNally's schedule and put it into Ms. Rexler's schedule, to make it a full-time schedule, because the person coming in is not gonna do any dean work.
Right.
So, next Monday night, I'll recommend somebody to-
And what about the dean work?
That's the person who's gonna come from, the woman who came and presented to us-
Right.
Is gonna come in.
But that's, so I count three people for two old positions. Is that a full-time or not full-time?
No, 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 no.
She's like a consultant now.
Yeah.
Oh, so, okay, okay.
And Ms. Rexler also was paid a stipend in addition to her work, so-
But you're, I'm just, I'm simply concerned about the financial implications of this, especially after my passion talk about-
And I'm concerned from the special education area, why we need this increase of a full-time person to expand resource room program.
Well, the person who would come to replace Ms. McNally is gonna teach more than one class. If you do the math, or I can't get, I can't completely strip all of Ms. McNally's classes, there probably are gonna be three, two or three classes remaining. So, I do need somebody to fill in for her.
Yeah, yeah.
Because unless I find somebody who's willing to just do three periods a day, which I think is gonna be very difficult for us to find this juncture of the year.
So, we're gonna expand our resource room program to make her a full-time schedule?
Sorry? I can't-
So, you're saying that we don't necessarily have the need right now for a full-time special education teacher, but we need to find a teacher, so we'll find things for her to do, for him?
They can teach general ed.
Go ahead.
I mean, isn't that what you're saying? I mean, they wouldn't necessarily teach special ed the whole time, I mean-
No, they would teach some general ed, that I can't move away into Ms. Rexler's class.
Right, but what you said originally was that you were, you needed to expand the resource room program.
That the person who I would bring in to take over Ms. McNally's class would have a couple of holes in her schedule or his schedule, so what I'm, so what Mrs. Osemayi is recommending and I'm suggesting is, we use that person to alleviate some of our numbers in our special education resource room classes.
Can you give us the numbers in the special education resource?
The person we're gonna be looking for for that position should be special ed certified.
No, the numbers, I'd like to know what the numbers are right now in those classes.
The numbers, I mean, we're in compliance, but if we could create smaller classes, we would like to. And again, if we wanted, if the Board wanted to save money, I could try to find a part-time person.
Well, yeah.
However, I'm cautious.
It's, well, it's, it's not that, and I think I understand that when we were replacing someone who's part-time A and part-time B, it's very hard to find someone who's an exact match, so we're doing what we have to do, and I think we had that discussion about the finances of it, so I'm not too upset about that. But as we go into next year, it may be, there's gonna be casualties, because we just can't raise enough money with the tax increases. It's at least something to think about. You know, the meeting, the last meetings we would always have to try to get enough, you know, enough savings for the budget.
Right.
This may be something to just think about.
Absolutely. I mean, our vision is in 2018, 19, to have somebody in-house take over the Dean of Restorative Practices work, and so we would end up reverting back to the schedule that we have right now. Somebody teach like Ms. Rexler, teaching two classes.
I hadn't realized that the, that the person you were recommending to replace Ms. Rexler was a consultant, part-time.
Correct, timed a little, yeah.
I hadn't realized that, so I apologize for being-
So, Ruth, does that make sense?
I would just like the numbers for the special education resource room classrooms right now, as they say.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, so, if there aren't any other questions for Judy, we have-
Just one more, sorry. Speaking of trends, I'm a little concerned about the number of resignations we're seeing, you know, not even at the end of the year, in the beginning, in the middle of the year, Suzanne Ackley, and Maureen Rexler, and the guidance counselor. Are we doing exit interviews, so we can kind of see if there's, you know, a reason other than-
Well, I could explain why each person left, if you'd like.
In public?
Privately.
Terribly good.
Privately, but there are very good rationales for that.
I can tell, Ruth, something, though, it's, rest assured, every Personnel Committee meeting we have, we go through, we have a chart that we made of who's left, for what reasons, and what buildings, and was we wanting to make sure there wasn't any pattern, that it didn't seem to be excessive. Can you share that with the rest of us, Mandy?
I'm sorry, what's the question, Ruth?
Can she share that?
I can share with you privately.
The, without giving any information, the reasons for these people leaving is nothing to be alarmed about, but if it were, we're on top of it in the Personnel Committee. No, that's good, but I would like to know that information also.
Sure. I don't think there's any harm in sharing that with you, I just, I think Darcy's right, I probably shouldn't broadcast that publicly.
Yes, no. Okay, so, let's move on to policies. Ann's not here to give a policy committee report, I don't know if anybody else who's on policy, if there's been any meetings or-
I am, but I wasn't able to go to the meeting, I was-
Okay.
We were just sitting, like, agenda for coming out, we didn't really-
We had a planning, we had a planning meeting. And then this was the only item, and I, we, we're voting on this, I believe.
Next week, yeah.
Not tonight?
No.
No, we can't vote tonight.
Oh, we can, yeah.
It's on for second read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, next week.
We tweak the language.
Didn't we table it in the minutes that we, we've had? I remember tabling 85-50 for further discussion.
Not last, not at the last month's meeting, no.
No, I think it was the week before.
Can you tell me what the title of that policy is? Do you know the title of the policy?
It's the Outstanding Food Service Judges.
My recollection is that, that was tabled.
Why?
Because we had some trouble with the language that was recommended by the state as to whether or not we would, that we would hold the punches.
No, I think that's why this one is on its own, because it got separated out from the big pack that we did at the last meeting. So, this one got separated out, and I think you guys came up with better language.
We changed the wording in the meeting.
At the last policy meeting.
At the last policy meeting, and it's being brought back from the tabling now with new words, and it is-
Oh, okay, and we did have a first reading.
We did.
Prior to-
And then we tabled it, and this is the second reading after changing the words, and the words, I'm not, I don't know how to say this, but they skirt the issue of, of not giving a child food.
Right.
Okay. Very carefully not to break the law, but also not to have someone go hungry.
Right, okay.
I am pleased to report, thanks to the Policy Committee's diligence, we went over the audit, you recall, and we are really, we're nailing all of those missing policies and outdated policies. We'll have a batch for everybody in January, I think about 10 policies or so.
Fabulous. I like hearing that. And, without, I think, one of our greatest accomplishments was getting rid of the part in our policy that said we had to review every policy, like, biannually or something, so we would just be reading every policy, beating our head. It was preposterous.
It is preposterous.
And unproductive. I mean, I'm all for doing work, but not spinning my wheels work. Like, now, we're doing the ones that need to be done on annual, on an annual basis, we're doing the ones that come to us through policy alerts, we're getting through policy, but we're not doing busy work. Excuse me, I don't know where my voice keeps going.
And thanks for bringing that up, Scott, because you gave us a list of what I would say were important to the district, and we went through them and prioritized them, and we have an agenda now to move forward on, and I wish Ann were here to describe this better, but it's really good.
She could do it for us next week.
Yes.
We'll save something. Okay, so, if no one has any questions about that one single solitary policy, we will move on. We don't have anything for Equity and Excellence, so we will now do our second public comment. This time's been, no?
No, that's after our new business. That was moved.
Oh, right, 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 that one was moved, right, right, right. Sorry, it's not your time, Keith.
Hold your horses, Keith.
All right, sorry, that's right. 12 got moved up to four, so, so now it's the president's report, so I get to say the thing I don't want to say. But on December 3rd, the Board received an email from our colleague, Sharice Richardson, letting us know that she needed to resign her board seat, and she wanted me to read her letter, which said, Dear BOE President Simaresti, HP Board Members, Board Secretary Linda Hofela, Superintendent Scott Taylor, and Highland Park Community, it is with great regret that I need to inform you of my resignation from the Board of Education, first community and administration alongside such a dedicated group of public school advocates. I am proud of the strides we have- Sharice has been on the Board for the past two years, she had one more year left in her term, so we will miss her greatly for that year. I've told her that, you know, as time passes and life gets, you know, life changes and sometimes gets more chaotic and sometimes less chaotic, that if it does happen to become less chaotic, that we hope that she'll consider coming back to us, as Mr. Krieger has, because the Board is never going anywhere, it's always here, there's always work to be done, there's always kids that, you know, need strong, committed, dedicated people to sit behind this table and do the work that we do. So, I hope, we have not seen the last of Sharice. You know, she's left, you know, a couple of lasting legacies, both through founding Highland Park Parents of Students of Color, that's a group that we now send a liaison to, to keep us abreast of what's going on in that community, and starting the Equity and Excellence Committee that she chaired. So, somebody coming in has some, some seriously big shoes to fill. So, anybody who's out there watching, who is interested, we will need to appoint somebody to Sharice's seat. So, starting tomorrow, you can send in a letter to the Board Secretary's office, to Linda Hofela's office.
That's the announcement for that one.
Ah, wonderful. So, there's an announcement that's already been drawn up. Highland Park Board of Education, announcement of board member vacancy, term date 1-3-2018 through 12-31-2018. Residents of Highland Park who are interested in being appointed to the Highland Park Board of Education may make application by submitting a letter of interest and resume no later than 10:00 AM Thursday, December 21st, 2017, to Ms. Linda Hofela. Board Secretary, Highland Park Board of Education, 435 Mansfield Street, Highland Park, New Jersey, 08904. Statement mandated criminal history background check and financial relative disclosures will be required. Interview of candidates will be scheduled for the January 3rd, 2018, meeting at the public board meeting. So, what we will do is, Linda's office will collect those applications for us, we will make them available to everyone on the drive, for everyone to review. The intention, as stated in the, the announcement, is at our reorganization meeting, what we'll do is, the people you see sitting at the table now is our reconstituted Board. Luckily for us, Michelle, and Rob, and Ann, who's not here, all won reelection, so they'll all be back with us next year for another three-year term. Sharice's seat is a one-year term, so the appointment will be for that one-year unexpired term. If that person chooses to stay on the Board, they would have to run again November of 2018, if they would like to seek election. But so, at that January 3rd meeting, we would come out, we would, the three board, new board members, or new old board members, would be reappointed, we would recess back into closed session. Oh, no, first we're gonna, which way do we do it?
Before the meeting?
Just got myself confused.
Okay, at the meeting, we draw names out of a hat to determine the order.
Right.
Interview each of the candidates while the other candidates are in a undisclosed location.
Oh, that's right, we get to run people around the building. We're gonna need students, we'll need students at that meeting.
Well, the student representatives usually help us with that.
Yes, I was in the nurse.
And then the Board recesses back into executive session to deliberate and determine who they would like to recommend, and then they announce the recommendation at the meeting.
Right.
And then they, we seat the new board member that, at that time.
Right, okay, so we would start at that, at that board meeting, with our nine-person Board moving forward for them.
And then do the reorganization, the quote reorganization.
And then do the reorganization, right, right, exactly. All right? Here we go. Okay, so, that's all I have tonight for my president's report, and then we have old business. Scott, you wanna talk to us a little bit about the exchange program?
I put the first item on the agenda, because I would like to put some closure, one way or the other, on the discussion that we started to have, that had our students potentially going to China in April. Elsie came and presented to the Board, the community, about the trip, plans, she, I have been told that we are still within a timeframe that would have us sending the kids if we get in the great light in April. But I think if we don't resolve how we're gonna go forward by the end of this month, we'll have to wait probably until the fall. I, you know, while it doesn't require Board action for us to move forward, I definitely want the Board's blessings or not, because I think it's a pretty big deal. So, I just wanna open up for discussion, concerns, questions, remaining questions. I know some came up at the curriculum meeting, so if you wanna air those out now, that's the time.
Does anybody have anything specific? No?
Well, just to throw it out there, one of the concerns that I had was what the, well, I see a lot of the benefits to the students going overseas to participate in this program, I was trying to evaluate what the advantage to the professionals in the district would be. Scott spoke about that briefly, about what they would bring back from that, from a trip to China, prior to the students going, but that was one of the items that we discussed during the Curriculum Committee meeting.
Is that necessary? I mean, is-
For what, for what part of it?
You're saying for staff to go ahead of the students, like, as a-
Well, that was what-
That's what she said at the last meeting.
It was part of the proposal.
Yeah, Elsie recommended it.
I missed that in the, I missed that in the, that wasn't her proposal.
I didn't hear them going ahead, I heard them going with them.
She didn't recommend it, of course, but she has recommended it in the past. I mean, the only thought was to be sure that everything was made in advance, arrangements were made in advance, but either way, I don't think it's a deal breaker if we don't do that.
That wasn't part of her, it wasn't part of her presentation.
And from personal experience, my daughter-in-law is, goes, is a high school teacher at a private school in New York, where they do the IB program, you know, International Baccalaureate, and they go on two trips typically a year, and they're, those teachers go as chaperones, and they go on the plane with the students, and they come back on the plane with the students, and they pretty much live in the same quarters as the students, so I don't see why we would do anything different than that.
And this isn't the first time that this idea was thrown around. I mean, when the whole global citizenship idea came up six years ago, I mean, I can't even remember how long ago it was, Elsie came to the Board and presented this idea, and at that time, the Assistant Superintendent Karen Lewis and Ann Scherber, as a board member, actually went on a, you know, kind of fact-finding mission to China about this program, so that, that kind of, that, that piece has been done, I don't, I think now it's just, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it, and-
Yeah, I mean, that's my thinking at this point. She did, Elsie did at one point recommend that we send an advance team, a recon team, but I don't think it's necessary.
She might have said something like that in passing, but I thought in the main presentation, it was they're gonna go on the plane with them and come back on the plane with them, and I don't see any need, but maybe here is, I don't know.
Yep.
I wouldn't be in favor of that.
I'm not in favor of that either.
It seems like a complete overkill.
Curricularly, is that a word?
It is tonight.
So, I absolutely understand the benefit for the kids, just as an exploration and tremendous opportunity to see a part of the world that they may not otherwise have a chance to see. Aside from that, though, would there be some sort of curriculum that would be planned out that would coincide with this trip, that would make it more than simply the trip? That would be part, and this is possibly why we should consider thinking about how we could implement something along those lines that would be actually part of a year's study for some kids.
Find a way to integrate it into their study, so if it's, let's say, seniors who are going, and we can weave it into a class, either as a project or a report back.
As a project or as a semester or part of a semester.
That's a great idea. I'm not sure if it takes a curriculum document to do that, but definitely, what kind of protocol we have to give them?
I mean, from-
I mean, from a curriculum standpoint, I think that's a great idea, and I think that since we have a Chinese instructor, Chinese language instructor on staff, you know, she might be able to be a point person if there were some sort of, you know, I don't know if there would be a required curriculum or something, but she might have some ideas, perhaps, on that end, because she, part of her job is to teach Chinese culture.
Yeah, and history. I mean, I would think that before you would go on a fantastic trip like that, you would want to have the kids that go have some background and understanding of what they were going to see.
Right, some concept or...
Just a thought.
Yeah.
And learn a few words of the language.
Yeah, it's too bad we're not at the point that the Chinese language is in the high school, because it would seem like it would tie in so much better at a later point than it really does now.
Right.
Now just seems like a trip for a small group of people, so I don't know.
That's kind of my thinking, of getting the teacher involved that we have on staff. You know, maybe she can give some sort of, you know, parameters about, you know, what to pay attention to, what, you know, maybe how to say hello and goodbye, you know?
All right, so if anybody has any concerns about it, maybe let Scott know before the next meeting? Otherwise, we'll just consider that the Administration has the thumbs up to...
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll reach out to Elsie tomorrow.
Okay. Reregistered today?
So, the good news is, we're down from approximately 600 families and guardians that had to reregister to 24, who still haven't registered, made headway. We had two out-of-district students, families, guardians who hadn't reregistered, and we've resolved those two, they've reregistered. So we're, we don't have any out-of-district families or guardians who have not reregistered at this point. So a question I think we should consider going forward is if we want to do this again this year, we don't have to discuss that now, but please start thinking about it. I'm up for it.
I didn't understand your last point. Are we down to, you're saying we're down to no one?
Twenty-four.
Oh, 24.
We're down to 24 total, but if you recall, last time I met with you, there was...
Who have not reregistered?
Yeah.
Okay. Out of the 50% of the students who were asked to reregister?
Sorry, I don't understand.
Only half the students, right, were, only half the families were asked?
Yes, yes, yes. Six hundred.
Six hundred were asked. Okay, and out of that, we are down to 24.
Correct.
Okay, and we, yeah, okay. And you're recommending that we do it again next year for the other half? Good.
And, all right, and this is maybe a stupid question. Those 24, we have confirmed that they're, the kids are in the district this year.
We have. They're still with us, so we told them to follow up.
All right, okay, just making sure.
At some point, we need, we need to keep plugging. You know, in some cases, it just, it has to do with, and I can't give you numbers, I wouldn't know right now, with incomplete documentation. So some of these families, guardians, may have given us two-thirds of what they have to give us, they're just haven't completed the documentation.
There's a difference between sending a letter out repeatedly and getting no answer and getting half the documentation, obviously. It would be useful to know of the 24, how many have shown us enough information that they likely live here, as opposed to they've never answered, we don't know where they are, and they could be in California for all we know, or not California, but in Weehawken, and we want to...
That'd be commitment coming from Weehawken every day.
Yeah, we'd be commitment, but we want to do some, you know, we want to take some action.
I do have to say that, I was at a meeting today of Rutgers with several of my peers, there was a presentation by some professors on DACA and immigration, and how schools should be handling certain situations, and they touted our district as a model, in two ways, for protecting students. One, that we are careful in our registration documents, thanks to the input I got from the community, of course, that we do not ask for immigration status information or anything related to that. And two, and I think we're one of the few districts who's doing this right now in the region, our student information system, Janusys, does not anymore collect several fields of information that aren't required by the state that relate to immigration status, including our original date of entry into the United States, and things related to that. I was happy to hear that, because, I mean, I want to be a model, I think we need to do our job to protect these kids, and I welcome anybody from outside our community to come here and learn more about how we do it.
All right.
Have we considered the process, how we would do it this coming year, for the, I guess it would be the odd number grades?
Yes. So we would want to reregister the odd numbers again this year, if we were going to do it again.
Otherwise, you'd get the same people, if you want to...
To be sure, that everyone has been touched by the reregistration process.
You want to even be the same people!
I know, it'd be nuts.
But the last time we had the, the parents had to take either a time off from work to come into the school, or some other process, I was just wondering if we looked at whether or not we could just have them submit an envelope through the office.
I think you brought that idea up at one of our committee meetings, and I thought it was a good one. We haven't dived into that yet, but if we get, when we get closer to March, and I come back to the Board and get feedback as to whether we should do this again, if I get the green light from the Board, I definitely, we would find alternative ways to reregister families, guardians. Yeah, I, in hindsight, I don't think it requires us to have everybody be physically present as long as we have the proper documentation.
Right. That would be my preference, to find an alternative to that.
Actually, it would mean saving a few dollars on overtime fees, salary, as well, though I wouldn't have to bring out as many secretaries for as many days, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business. Scott, you're gonna talk about, or is Linda talking about the budget planning schedule? Which one of you gets that honor?
Sure, I'll talk about it. So I provided everyone with a document that summarized our process, and behind it is what comes from the Department of Education, different events, timelines, and also the statutory citation for those. But basically, during this time, starting this week, and running into probably the second week of January, Dr. Taylor and I are meeting with all the various administrators, principals, supervisors, some managers, to discuss their budget development, their needs, and fine-tuning that. Then, by the end of January, we begin our meetings with the Finance Committee, and each of the administrators, we schedule them to also attend, to present their individual budgets to the committee, and also help to provide more, further explanation and answer questions. We are not absolutely sure when the Governor's going to give the budget address. The law says that the Governor has to do it the Fourth Tuesday of February. However, when there's a new Governor, there have been many instances where the Governor feels that he needs more time, and he's granted that extension. So it might be later than February 27th. That said, two weeks after the, the, two days after the Governor's budget address, state aid figures are released to the school districts. That's when we know what we're going to get from the state, and that's when we finally can figure out whether what we're looking for in our expenditures will be supported by all the revenue sources. And if not, that's when we start to scramble to come to a balanced budget. We need to have that tentative budget, which is balanced, presented to the Board for tentative approval, no later than March 20th. I've written down March 12th, because that coincides with the proposed Board meeting schedule. If the Board wants to consider any changes to the schedule, well, you just need to know that the tentative budget needs to be approved or adopted by the Board by, and submitted to the state, the DOE, by March 20th. Then, once we have a tentative budget, presentations can be made to various organizations through, through May, even after the budget has been approved. There is a requirement that a formal public hearing has to take place between April's 24th and May 7th. The adoption of the final budget, which can be the same as the tentative budget, or could be very different, because you do have about six, six or seven weeks in between where you can make adjustments to that tentative budget, so. But the Board adoption has to take place by the, May 14th, but usually, the Board hearing and adoption of the budget take place at the same meeting. However, if there's, I guess they give you an extra week just in case there are some more changes that need to be made. So that's tentatively scheduled for May 7th, although it can happen anytime between April 24th and May 7th, and right now, we don't anticipate that we would be needing a later date for adoption of the budget. So we are expecting that the adoption of the final budget would take place that same day. And then, within 48 hours of the adoption of the final budget, the user-friendly budget must be posted on the district's website. Any questions? Nope, so that's the process.
All right. Buckle in, Finance Committee. It's our turn. We're on the hot seat. All right, for the, no one has any questions? No? So, next up is our, look at that, is our proposed Board of Education meeting calendar for 2018. I think it was on the drive, and then it wasn't on the drive, I don't know what happened.
I, no, I found it on my email, and I'm displaying it, so, we'll take care of it later. I think for now, we should look at it.
It wasn't, it didn't end up on the drive, so we thought we'd...
It's all good.
Things happen. So this is the proposed calendar for our Board meetings for next year. Scott sent it to the head of school, which...
To RPRY?
To RPRY.
I did, and I just, so this calendar doesn't reflect a proposed change. September 24th, I believe, is the first night of Sukkot. Is that possible?
I have to look.
Yeah, I think it is.
Well, we sent it to the, the gentleman.
I think Rabbi Lo, Daniel Lo, pointed that out. So I was gonna propose in September, we actually meet two weeks prior.
So you'll ship that, and then...
Yeah, I'll ship it, and then put it back in the drive.
Okay, and put it back on the drive, okay.
And...
I'm sorry?
September.
So I'm thinking that our meeting would be September...
10th and 17th.
10th?
11th? January 3rd?
Why don't you bring it up?
Well, as far as I know, the 10th was Rosh Hashanah.
I haven't looked at it, I'm sorry.
No, 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 don't worry.
Yeah, the 10th is Rosh Hashanah.
Oh, is it?
That's, I think that's why we didn't have it on the 10th to begin with.
So we're, we're caught between two holidays, we'll have to take a look at September. I don't want to pull my calendar up, so somebody can pull up the calendar, take a look. If I do that, the whole world's gonna see my calendar. I have nothing to hide, I just...
I don't have the Jewish holidays on my calendar, though.
And this calendar syncs up with the budget planning process?
So, Rosh Hashanah is, starts on the evening of Sunday.
Maybe, for May, it does. That's really the date that we, the March and May dates are the important ones.
Yom Kippur is September 19th.
Well, according to this, Rosh Hashanah is September 10th and 11th.
Yeah, that's right.
Yom Kippur is September 19th. Sukkot is September 24th to 30th.
Good grief, you see that, Rob?
So, it seems like the 17th wouldn't be a problem.
What's the other three?
So the 24th is the problem.
Well, I mean, September also is typically not a heavy agenda. I mean, we could potentially get away with one meeting in September.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I, in fact, I think people would appreciate that, knowing how difficult it is when we start the year.
Right. So maybe that's, maybe that's the path of least resistance.
Might be a long meeting.
Right.
So would you propose just having them meeting September 17th?
I mean, it sounds like the juggling is, what's the first day, Beth?
Oh, I don't know yet, but I'm sure it'll be around the 6th, 7th, or 8th of September.
Right. Better not be the 8th, because that's Saturday. I don't think anybody would appreciate that.
All right, so we'll...
Wait, what about the 24th?
Can you get closer to your mic?
I think that's the problem.
Oh, I'm sorry. What about the 24th? If someone has to miss one meeting, people miss meetings.
Well, I think it's because we don't want the public to miss the meeting, don't we?
Yeah, I mean, it's 24th to Sukkot.
Knowingly scheduling something that's on a holiday.
Do we knowingly schedule stuff on the Jewish holidays all the time?
We have, and I know, so let's stop doing that.
And he doesn't like the idea, is what he's saying.
Well, what about the 26th, then, or something? I mean, maybe we don't have to...
Is it just the first night that you have to ignore, avoid, or...
Well, I don't know, I mean, it depends how observant you are, you know, that you can hardly meet at all, I mean, in September, there's like, if I look, I have the Jewish calendar here for September. And you can, you can, right, you could hardly meet, if you, if you're worried about this, seriously.
Right.
Sukkot, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, I mean, you, 7, you're literally unable to meet on the 9th, 10th, 11th, 18th, 19th, 23rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, and 30th. You can meet, you know...
Right, so let's do the one meeting.
But we could just have one voting meeting on the 17th.
One meeting on the 17th.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think anyone will fault us for one month where we have just one, we don't have a workshop, and we...
I'm OCT, so...
I'm sure they'll...
All right, does that sound agreeable to everybody?
17th?
Yes, please.
So take out the 24th.
All right. And I feel like I'm getting so cold, my brain's not working anymore, why?
It's because of the budget, we need to save money on heat.
There you go. All right, um, yes.
I didn't know if you wanted to consider possibly moving the March 12th meeting to the 19th, just so we have a little bit more time to discuss the budget before the tentative budget has to be adopted.
Can you scroll down, Scott?
Sometimes we have added...
A meeting in March.
Well, that's a possibility, too. It's just that, by the 12th, we may still be struggling to balance the budget. And usually, we want to have more meetings after we have a tentative budget, and then go through making, you know, tweaking it if we need to, or making adjustments, but it was, just to get to that tentative budget, we might need a, I mean, that extra week might really be helpful, especially if the Governor gives a delayed budget address.
Right.
If he waits another week, we may have just like three days to turn it around.
So maybe instead of the 5th and the 12th, the 12th and the 19th, is that what you're...
Or the 5th and the 19th, either way.
Or the 5th and the 19th.
Either way. The old, my old Boards used to meet at two-week intervals a lot of the time.
Really?
Do 5th and 19th, it doesn't matter, I don't care, but the 12th and the 19th is good.
Does that sound okay to everybody?
Is that work for you, Linda?
And then that gives us, I mean, the nice thing about March, we have four Mondays in March, so we can, we can go in either direction if we need to. All right.
That's holiday.
That's wrong month.
I'm sorry, so I lost track of...
3/26 is fine.
Okay.
It's March.
Ah, sorry, March.
12th and 19th.
So, oh, the 19th of February, that's Presidents. I see.
Oh, I see.
Unless there's some other reason.
Got it.
Okay. Okay, so we'll all take a look at that during the course of the week, and that'll be up for us to approve next week. Does anybody else, has any, does anyone have anything else they want to bring up under new business?
Just a question, is there any objection to me taking out the recognition column? We were keeping, trying to keep track of who we were recognizing, faculty, students, but it changes somewhat.
Oh, you mean buildings? That was where we were doing, what buildings we were gonna be at?
We are, I'm gonna take the recognition column out, we were...
That's fine.
It's kind of useless.
Thought of something. We had talked about, I mean, like, months ago, the way the attendance was taken at Bartle, that kids were not being marked, you know, there until like 10:30. So, did we have any updates on that from Bartle, or could we get an update for next week? About the attendance at Bartle?
Let's see, can you repeat the first part?
Yeah, the, there was a few community members, and a discussion that we had had about the attendance procedure at Bartle, and how kids were kind of nowhere until 10:30 or later, because of the attendance being delayed. So I was wanting some update, if there's...
Okay, you know what, I'm sorry, I didn't follow up on that, but I will, in time for the next meeting.
Okay, so for next week, guys? Yeah, can we get some? Yeah, can we get some?
If I have any questions, I'll reach out to you about it.
Yeah, it was, it was months ago, probably, like...
It was beginning of September.
May? When we first got the email?
That was, that was this school year, that was this fall. That was this fall.
Wasn't it? Okay, okay. No, there were conversations that I had had in May about, about my middle school and high school kids. Yeah, no, so this was months ago. I don't remember exactly when, but...
I think it was quite early.
An update would be great.
All right, public comment. Keith, you got anything for us? No, nothing. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Good night, everybody.
Lisa won't be shocking.
It's just too funny when that happens.